So we've been raising butterflies this, this summer.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we, uh, Sherry went out to, we had got lots of milkweed around the house, so Sherry went out and found a few eggs. And she's been, she was feeding them. And we've had three of them come out of their chrysalis in the last four days.
Yeah, that is exciting.
It's pretty cool. We got to watch one of them actually come out of the chrysalis this afternoon. Usually we've been missing them because it takes them like fifteen seconds to pop the shell and boom.
That is cool. And not that you're saying anything sensitive, but you are being recorded and we are.
Oh, no. Biological experiment.
So it's Maureen while we're waiting. Um, I wanted to ask Brian and maybe Nancy, I just have printed minutes for August eighteenth. So I think some others are in, but I guess if I'm, I really do want them printed. So I think it would help if we, in general, when it has our agenda, shows the minutes, um, just shows the ones that are in the packet. So we're all kind of, I do try to follow.
So Maureen, those are the only ones, um, that were ready. I'm in the process of doing the two for September.
No question, Nancy. Not at all.
Not quite ready.
Thank you. I, and but even for Brian, it would help if we go back to Suzanne and ask her to put the, um, actual minute, the date on the agenda.
Yeah, before she finalizes that, I'll ask her to do that.
Thank you.
So we have Diab, we have Maureen. Uh, still just the two. Um, applicants are here for the seven thirty. Um, but we are waiting on our third and fourth members. So everyone, we're just going to hold tight, uh, for a little longer. For those who just joined, we're just waiting a few more minutes, uh, until we have a quorum. Uh, so just hold tight, everybody. All right, we now have, um, a quorum. The rest of the planning board members have, have joined.
Thank you, Brian. Um, this is Heather Von Mering. I am chair of the planning board and today is, oh, what day is it? Um, it is October sixth, twenty twenty. Um, I'm going to open the meeting at seven thirty-two P M. Um, also, um, I also want to make everyone, uh, know that this meeting is being recorded by Wind Cam and it is being broadcasted on Wind Cam as well. So if you do speak, you will be, um, you will be recorded. Um, today on our agenda, we have at seven thirty, the public hearing on sixty-six fifty-four Main Street, special permit petition for the C B D. Eleven at eight thirty, we plan to take the public hearing for the planning board fall town meeting articles, which will be, um, which we will, um, have a Q and A session for those, um, town meeting articles during that period. At nine thirty, um, the planning board will review, um, update and the approval of minutes. And at the end of the day, we'll deal with, uh, new business that's not known at the time of the posting and hopefully adjourned before ten P M. Um, just so those who are on, um, who are specifically here for six fifty-four Main Street. Um, currently my plan as the chair is to open the hearing for this and then run, um, through the presentation, um, that they are going to do. Um, and then proceed to, um, put into record the memos and letters received. And, um, most likely open public comment. However, I'm not going to accept public comment right now. Um, we will continue that to our next meeting, um, and with the board's permission, um, hopefully go into, um, a number nine of our process with their permission to determine the need of consultants. So that can be begun if needed. So for those who would like to speak, um, uh, you, um, we will be going and providing a tremendous amount of time, um, at our next meeting. I just want to make sure you know that we will not be taking public comment most likely at this time for six fifty-four Main Street. However, when the hearing is continued, that portion of the hearing will take place, um, since we only have an hour of time. Um, public hearing, as I said, for the fall town meetings will be a Q and A session after, um, the town planner presents each article. Um, and we're going to try to limit that and, um, to keep that within the hour, but obviously want to hear all the questions that the public has regarding those items. Um, so just so everyone knows how, uh, their time and where, um, what is, and obviously this is being recorded as well, Wind Cam.
Heather, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
I didn't understand what you were saying about why we wouldn't be taking public comment in this hour.
Um, I don't think we're going to be able to get through, um, all of it. I think when we get through, um, the procedures that we have in place, through, um, the opening, the meeting purpose, the rules and procedures, um, and the presentation by the applicant, documenting the memos and letters, and then all the comments from town staff and other boards, I think that will take us through the hour. So it's more just to let the public know that we most likely will not get to the public comment period. But we will, that would start up at the next, most likely at the next hearing when we're continued. It just has to do with time. We are definitely taking, obviously, public comment. Um, it's just at this time.
Jumping in together. Also to be clear, before the end of the, um, hearing, um, when we continue it, well, it's not the end, before we continue the hearing, uh, we will give a time certain, we will say the exact date and the time when we continue the hearing.
Yep, and so that would be where we would pick up wherever we left off on our procedures. Um, so with that, um, let us begin, um, for the, I'm going to welcome the public. Welcome to a public hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. I'm going to call the hearing to order. Um, and everyone, um, who is here, um, you all had to provide your names to, um, access the meeting. However, there are a few of you who are on phone. Um, and we would like to keep records of who is here during our hearings. Um, and Brian, is there a way you wanted to gather those phone numbers of who those people are?
Um, sure, so one of them, uh, we know who it is. Um, and then there's, there's one that I don't, and then there's one other person, um, that just has their first name. So for the purpose of the board as public servants, we really do need to know who's in the meeting. This is supposed to be a public hearing.
So what is the phone number that you do not have identified, Brian, on the participants list?
So I've, I've asked them to unmute themselves. It is six one seven eight seven five three nine zero five.
If that is your number, can you please unmute yourself and identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm trying to, um, I can ask them to unmute, but they do not appear to be. Oh, there we go. Hello.
John Stevens. Sorry about that, guys.
John Stevens on the three nine oh five. Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Okay.
Stevens.
And then last one, there's also a John I'm going to unmute as well. Um, uh, that has a video. Hi, hi, John.
Hi, this is Julian Levitt.
John Levitt, wonderful. Um, so Nancy, that's L E A V I T T. All right, we can move on now.
All right. Thank you so much for that. All right, I'm going to repeat again that this is being recorded for the benefit of those who, uh, just come for the hearing. Um, the purpose of the public hearing, um, is to, actually, Brian, do you want to pull up the public notice? The public of, the reason of the meeting is to hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, October sixth, for the special permit and site plan review that of Beals Associates LLC to construct a new four-story mixed use at six fifty-four Main Street and six sixty-three Vine Street within the town of Winchester, Massachusetts. The applicant seeks relief from floor area ratio, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and height. That is why we are here. So now I'm going to go through, um, the rules and procedures. So, um, if you do choose to speak going forward, anyone who speaks, please state your name, your company that, if applicable, and address for the record. I ask that you direct all your comments and questions to me as the chair of the planning board. And I also ask that when you come before us, you unmute yourself, um, but you also mute yourself when you are done speaking and leave, uh, essentially the virtual table that we set at. Um, and if I do ask that we don't do repetitive information, um, and, um, we keep out irrelevant, um, information. If you do do it by accident, I will just notify you and we will move forward. Um, and, uh, so going from there, I would like, um, to introduce, um, the applicant. Uh, Brian, who is going to be presenting this evening, behalf of the applicant?
Ted Toluquian.
All right. Uh, Mr. Toluquian is the architect of the project. Um, and Mr. Toluquian, I'm going to give you fifteen minutes to present your project. Um, and if you need an extension of up to ten minutes, um, I, I do plan to allow it. So.
Thank you. I know Ian Gillespie is going to begin the presentation, then I.
My apologies.
Yes. And we have a presentation that I'm going to request that if we can share the screen, I think, Brian, you need to give me access.
You should be all set now.
All right. And if you can, um, tell me if you see a blue screen that announces the project.
We see it. You're all set.
All right. Ian, I think you're all.
Yes, thank you, Ted. And, uh, thank you to the chair. Thank you all for inviting us to join you on the agenda this evening. We also want to take a moment to thank Cheryl Wolf for volunteering to be on the planning board. Uh, we have all served on boards and we want to acknowledge how important it is for the town to have the benefits of your collective talent. We'd like to review with you this evening our application for a C B D special permit and site plan review for our project at six fifty-four Main Street or Fells Hardware. You may recall, we've had four meetings on the project with the planning board and five meetings with your consultant, Dennis Cartelone. Since we last saw you, we have also met with the Winchester Historical Commission. And fortunately, they found unanimously that the project had no adverse impact on a historical or cultural resource and recommended favorable action with no conditions. We also met last week with the design review committee and they also agreed unanimously to recommend moving the project forward. They did have a couple of conditions and we haven't yet seen their notes, but I think we know where we are with them. I'm Ian Gillespie of Gillespie and Company, and I've been a developer in Greater Boston for many years. I'm joined this evening by my good friends and colleagues, Jan Steenberga and Paul Setley from their firm, Ad Millora. Our very talented architect is Ted Toluquian, who will take us through the presentation on the building itself in a minute. Our planner and civil engineer is Larry Beals, with whom I've had the pleasure of working twenty-five years. John Copley of Copley Wolf and Marcus Kent, two of the landscape architects, and Mark Johnson is counsel. I'd like to take a moment to remind folks of the regulatory context in which we have planned this building. Some of our audience will remember the ten years of master planning for the central business district from two thousand fifteen, two thousand five, excuse me, to two thousand fifteen. At the two thousand fifteen town meeting, the planning board proposed a rezoning. The idea was to re-energize the downtown. So to put our, our presentation in context, we'd like to briefly review the planning, this is the planning board's presentation to town meeting in two thousand fifteen with regard to the zoning. And they asked, how did we get here? And they reminded the town that there had been ten years of planning, twelve years of planning that led up to this. They concluded that the zoning was out of date. The goal of the new zoning was to add residential housing and to extend the retail district at both Main Street and Mount Vernon. The goal was for housing, for housing was two hundred new units over ten to fifteen years. And the idea was to encourage mixed use, and we have incorporated retail and restaurant space at the streetscape with residential above. We have heard and taken to heart the need to maintain the aesthetic of downtown Winchester. The planning board also felt comfortable in presenting to the town meeting the idea of going plus or minus fifty-five feet within the C B D. And finally, the board appropriately wanted fifteen percent affordable housing, and we have included that in our proposal. What also changed was that the permit granting authority, which had been the zoning board of appeals, was changed to the planning board. Town meeting approved the planning board's proposal with a ninety-two percent affirmative vote. Our presentation this evening is for the Fells Hardware Store site, and I'm sure you all know Kevin Ryan and his son Andrew. I'm very pleased to say that the beloved hardware store will come back into new quarters, uh, in the finished building. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to architect Ted Toluquian. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian, and, uh, thank you for the introduction. As Ian noted, he provided a brief, uh, overview of the permitting process. And, um, what I'd like to do is just follow up with, uh, a brief outline of our presentation. I understand that time is limited and I'll try to keep it as concise as possible. Our presentation will include a, uh, brief overview of the existing conditions, a recap of the requirements of the C B D section seven point three of the zoning bylaws, and a review of the proposed design, which includes in general sixty-three Vine Street, which will be rebuilt and renovated as a residential unit. It will include two commercial spaces, and as Ian noted, it will include Fells Hardware coming back to the site in a new space. Thirty-six dwelling units, of which fifteen percent or five are affordable units. There'll be nineteen one-bedroom units, fifteen two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. And an increase in a projected annual tax revenue of approximately three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars per year. We also have thirty-six to forty-one off-street parking spaces, thirty-two bicycle spaces, a two-point four-nine F A R, and twelve percent open space, fifteen by fifteen minimum, as well as twenty-five percent of the open space is open to the sky and a building height which is approximately fifty-two point eight-three feet. Um, everyone knows the site location, but for our virtual audience, we'll provide a brief overview of the context. It's located on the corner of Vine Street and Edgewood and Main. It has, um, a series of, uh, one-story, uh, buildings located in its vicinity. And it's adjacent to, uh, and inclusive to the site is the sixty-three Vine Street, uh, building. This is a photograph from the winter and its current exterior condition. As you can see, it's in disrepair. And as noted, and as a part of our historic commission favorable action, we will be rebuilding it and renovating it, uh, as a part of, uh, the fulfilling, I should say, the section five of the guidelines for existing historically significant buildings. Additionally, an attribute will be to promote, as a part of the project, is we're promoting and protecting Winchester Center's historic resources, which is sixty-three Vine Street, while also, uh, fulfilling an understanding of encouraging selective demolition, which is the Fells Building that promotes a smart growth, uh, development project. It's also notable, uh, to recognize the importance of this site and what it means to Winchester as a gateway site, uh, reinforcing its edge to the historic district as well as the cultural district and central business district as noted in blue, red, and orange. And since this project is subject to site plan and design review under the zoning bylaws, uh, we will be highlighting aspects of these standards and principles in our presentation to convey compliance with these requirements. And yet throughout this process that Ian noted with the pre-application meetings with the planning board, as well as with the design review consultant, um, we've, uh, really looked to the town's zoning bylaws, elements of form. I mean, it's a really terrific, um, descriptive document pointing to the guidelines apart of the town's past, present, and future architecture, which really makes Winchester such a unique and special place. I'm going to begin with the existing site plan, which is a rather unique site. It's about eight sides, um, as you can see outlined in red. We've met with, uh, the town's building officials and recognized that there are, uh, three sides, which are front yards and really one rear yard, which we're filling the special permit requirement for fifteen feet at its rear yard setback. These are a series of diagrams which we've included in our application, really to help, uh, convey the progression of my idea. The idea that where we begin with is looking at the zoning dimensional volume as located here and the fact that this building is in a FEMA floodplain, which I'll get to in a short period of time. Working with the design review consultant and the planning board and the pre-application here meetings to look at an appropriate scale, which was four stories, restoring the sixty-three Vine Street building, including a courtyard that relates to the residential fabric along Vine Street, as well as including, uh, street trees and setting back, um, our building from Main Street in order to create a better pedestrian experience along Main Street. Further looking to identify, uh, and break down the building scale by identifying a residential building that connects to Vine Street, excuse me, to Elmwood and Vine Street, as well as a mercantile building, uh, which connects to Main Street. And then furthering, um, developing the vernacular design language along Elmwood that includes, uh, roofline silhouettes as well as cornices that connect, uh, six twelve Main Street, uh, which is a beloved building in Winchester, uh, to the Main Street fabric. And overall, I think what we've tried to work towards is creating an architecture that could be a transitional element between the residential fabric of Elmwood and Vine Streets, as well as the commercial fabric along Main Street, and include buildings that are civic in their presence with a mix of uses. And yet also respect their historic partners and provide positive clues for future development. There are five basic components on the design, with the design, uh, one of which, as I noted, is, um, the Main Street building, uh, which has two retail spaces, a retail entry along Main Street. Uh, a residential building, as noted in blue, that includes a residential entry along Elmwood, as well as the garage entry and parking lifts that go to underground, um, automated parking, which I'll get to shortly, as well as a shared courtyard and the restoration of sixty-three Vine Street, and as well as the inclusion of Fells Hardware Store back to the site. Uh, we have a great design partner with Copley Wolf, who's helped to develop the site plan. And these include really the greening of the edges, uh, as I noted, the street trees, planters, setting back to create a great pedestrian experience at the lowest level. Flush planters, as well as trees in a, uh, shared courtyard, as well as private patios and ornamental trees around the edges. And we worked to really develop the greening on all sides so that we could transform this site from, which is really, uh, much of it is parking and storage and, um, the areas for Fells Hardware to a vibrant mixed-use project that connects to its adjacencies and really greens its edges. And this is a view from the other angle, showing the development and how it's scaled appropriately along Vine, as well as Elmwood and Main. A couple of the aspects of the project in the site plan review are screening and buffering. And as I noted in the site plan, really along the green edges is create these transitional elements, the residential fabric and to the, um, Main Street area, creating, uh, providing for emergency vehicle access on three sides of the site, as well as pedestrian entrances that are noted in red triangles along the edges, which really creates a lot of opportunity for porosity and entrances which make for a safer and more inclusive edge condition. Uh, there'll also be positions for, uh, four bikes, uh, two bicycle racks in each location along Vine and Main, as well as twelve bicycle racks along Elmwood. And of course, preserving historic structures, as I noted, with the Tenny Swan House. Our storm water, uh, management plan worked on with Beals and Larry is available for questions if you have further is that, you know, the existing site contains, uh, no storm water management systems generally. And, uh, storm water currently flows untreated and unrestricted into the municipal drainage system. Uh, the proposed drainage management system that Beals has designed will meet or exceed all of the applicable standards set forth in the Mass D O P Stormwater Handbook and Standards. And what you're looking at here are different infiltration and detention systems along the edges, which, uh, will fulfill the requirements is by the town and the state of Massachusetts. Additionally, we have included erosion and sedimentary sedimentation control. And that erosion control is implemented to really protect the abutting areas and floodplain from sedimentation runoff during construction activities. Our ground floor plan is really give you an understanding of, uh, how the plan flows around its edges. Uh, as you noted, there is the retail spaces along Main Street, and due to the floodplain that exists on the site, our retail spaces are upper approximately three feet to provide for accessibility uh, and a grand stair that leads us into the retail spaces, as well as using, uh, the slope of Vine Street to provide accessibility to the courtyard and the, the Vine Street, uh, restoration, which we see here, uh, as positioned, uh, proximity to the other adjacent buildings. We've also included five affordable units. Uh, the locations for those are noted in the plan as outlined in red. There'll be an affordable two-bedroom unit on the first floor, as well as others on the upper floors, which I'll show you next. But notably, it's really the floodplain that I want to, uh, point out. And this is a diagram that is a projection of what could occur with a hundred-year FEMA floodplain and how the site is, uh, flooding. And I think what our design team worked to do is, uh, provide compensatory flood storage, uh, that is proposed to offset the loss of existing flood storage within the bordering lands that are subject to flooding. Uh, which, by the way, I want to note is entirely separate from the storm water, I mean, storm water management system. This is a diagram that shows that we're providing, uh, for the proposed storage. This is a diagram that shows that we're providing for the proposed storage area that will be located between sections in the slab and will be unrestricted with flow that will become, will go in and out of the building along its edges.
This is Heather. I just wanted to let you know that your fifteen minutes are up. Did you want an extension?
Yes, we will be able to complete the presentation in ten minutes if the board would allow it.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. The basement plan provides for automated parking due to the eight-sided aspects of the site. There'll be two vehicle lifts that will provide for thirty-six to forty-one spaces. And as required under the special permit application, we've provided a traffic study prepared by Howard Stein Hudson. They've examined the surrounding roads, the intersections, the public parking, as well as the existing traffic data. And it determined that all the study area intersections will operate at the same level of service as existing. And this is projected with one vehicle trip every three to four minutes during the peak hour. So it really has an imperceivable impact on the traffic in the surrounding areas. These are the upper floor units and we worked to provide a really range, a good range of unit types. There are two additional affordable units on the second floor, as well as one on the third and one on the fourth, fulfilling a requirement for a nice diversity of units that face Main Street, face the courtyard, face Elmwood and also providing a roof plan with a recessed mechanical zone, which is approximately three feet below the edges, as well as a stairway to the roof, which, by the way, is required under the building code because the building is a four-story structure. What I'd like to do now is just take you on a brief, what I like to call walk around the block. A walk around the block is seen from one's eye level, beginning on Elmwood, leading to Main Street and then ending up on Vine Street. And what we're looking at here is the residential building, which is three and a half to four stories in scale. There is a copper sheet metal roof as that reinforced street patterns with gable roofs and dormers, as well as textured masonry and cornice lines. And we like to look to create details that relate to the human dimensions, forms that are really familiar as the building increases in heights, shaped to be more slender towards the slot, the top, slanted gable roofs that create animated roofline silhouettes, as well as including details that have New England authentic red brick, which is sympathetic to the general downtown palette. We've also looked to create details that have depth and texture, as well as operable windows with a balance of flush, as well as recessed balconies that are scaled directly to the character of the adjacent adjoining spaces, as well as chimney elements that reflect the living spaces within. As I noted, the recessed area in the roof plane, that is really to help hide and conceal the mechanical errors. And these are two sections that show one standing on Main Street and the concealment of the mechanical equipment, as well as at the peak of Vine Street and the slope of the roof and how that is set back to minimize any views from that area. I'm also going to walk you down Elmwood and you begin to see the sidewalk extension, the ornamental tree, the scale of the dormers and the balconies and the breaking down and the materiality as you lead back, as well as larger windows on the corner of Main Street that maximize visibility and transparency through the ground floor, retail level. We've included lateral arm awnings that really help offer an active vital marketplace that support the CBD and Winchester Cultural District guidelines, as well as sign panels and a brick palette that shifts between, slightly between reds, between the two buildings. As we move down Main Street, you begin to see the streetscape that really connects the fabric of the trees that exist on Main and up to the north. And moving around the corner here, you begin to see the experience of the ground floor with the stair and the accessible ramp due to the floodplain, the slight projection of balconies to humanize the facade and the textured brick. And really, I think the experience at this level, as one end, is fulfilling an accessibility requirement and a functional requirement with the FEMA floodplain, really creates an active sitting area for people to interact and be a part of the pedestrian level. We've included side panels, as well as lighting to support that, as well as canopies, as noted, and planter boxes, so that when you're walking through and down the Main Street area, really we create an intimate pedestrian scale that connects users to not just the retail experience, but also to the social experience, which I think makes streetscape so special. Moving back slightly, begin to see the scale of the building. And again, pulling back from Main Street, moving towards and up around the corner, you begin to see sixty-three Vine Street. At this point, we really want to celebrate its restoration. And we worked closely, I think, to Maureen's credit, really worked closely to really make sure that this was a part of the project and that preservation was particularly important and relevant to making this a unique project. We're continuing to work to restore the siding and the trim, as well as presume that the windows are six over six. We'll be replacing those, as well as providing operable shutters and creating an entry surround and front piece encasing with travéated areas and side lights to really create, bring back the Greek Revival architecture that makes it so unique, as well as evaluating and reinforcing the enclosed pediment on each side elevation, which is really an extension of the eve returns on each side. And as you move, we worked with the different presidents, we spoke with historic commission about looking at the cream-colored Greek Revival architecture, as well as the details which are a part of the application. And in conclusion, really, as we move back, is really, I think, taking advantage of the scale of Vine Street and the really great progression that you see between the architecture that exists, creating peek-a-boo, I like to call it peek-a-boo moments, moments where the gabled roofs have sightlines through and the gabled dormers and dormer elements begin to all interplay with each other. I really think to make a really appropriate and fantastic backdrop to the historic architecture along Vine Street. We've also included the dimensional requirements as a part of our application. But overall, and in conclusion, I think we work really closely to go beyond the requirements of the project and really look to the purpose of the guidelines and seek ways to weave these really important elements that are going to make Winchester important and provide them a part of the project. And I'd like to just pass the mic to Ian, if you could please sum up our presentation.
Yeah, thank you Ted. And I do want to be very brief. We were covering three hundred and twenty pages of submission, which are available to all interested parties, but it is a very complicated lengthy submission. We believe we have met the purpose requirements of the zoning as shown here. We're adding to the economic vitality, not only with tax revenue, but more importantly, by bringing people and activity to the center. We're hoping and helping to protect Winchester's historic resources. And frankly, we should credit Maureen for being tenacious in helping to save sixty-three Vine. We provide a diversity of housing by bringing both smaller units and affordable units to the center. And hopefully, we have done it in a way that is respectful to both the Mercantile Center and our residential neighbors. Ted Tolukey had a heck of a task make that happen. Thank you very much, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next step of the process, after hearing from the applicant, is to list the memos and letters that the board has received and summarize them. Brian, would you like to do that?
Sure. So we have received eight correspondence from residents. And then there was one person, one member from the Housing Partnership Board. And I can summarize those if you'd like. So the one memo from John Serbeer of the Housing Partnership Board. Give me just a second here. So this is, I'll make this a lot bigger because that's kind of impossible. From John Serbeer is simply asking that the applicant, along with the planning board, will work with the Housing Partnership Board as the affordable units in term of how the affordable units are managed, how, where they're located, basically everything to do with those affordable units. The Housing Partnership Board hopes that the planning board and the applicant will always keep them in mind and keep them in the loop. The rest of the correspondence that I've received is actually centered around this memo that's in front of you at the moment from Mr. Stevens. Mr. Stevens essentially says that much of this project is potentially incompatible with the existing buildings' character and the existing buildings surrounding the site in terms of character and scale, and that this building is an isolated architectural statement. That, that is the, please forgive me, I'm summarizing these, so I, you know, I don't think we have, we could go into them further and there will be certainly a time for public comment. But most of the public feedback that I received was actually related to this memo, meaning that if we look back here, it's, you know, saying, I agree with Mr. Stevens' memo. And then there's a small expansion of what they mean when they say that. But everything is pretty much centered around the building being too large, out of context, out of character and out of, out of scale. And most, or sorry, all of the correspondence essentially request the planning board to make this building significantly smaller or simply just to deny.
Thank you. So going forward, I know that with us, we have some town staff and some of representatives of town committees and boards here that wanted to, that have comments to provide us.
Hang on, just a sec Heather. Could we just hear the names and list the, look where they live of people?
People who sent in comments, yep.
Thank you.
Brian, can you provide that list or do you need a moment to gather all the exact names?
Sorry, it's not too hard. We can just go through it. So this is from a Yay Ping Zhang. They live at fifty-one Vine. John Serbeer at nine Chestnut, although he's speaking here not as in a butter, but as a member of the Housing Partnership Board. Mr. Stevens, in which everyone here is, also every planning board member has received all of these correspondence as well. I actually do not have an address for Mr. Stevens. He is certainly in the Wedge Pond neighborhood. Oh, here it is, forty-four Vine. We're almost done here. There are a number of photos that were submitted with the package. Another email from Mr. Stevens. Miss Mary Suzanne Stevens. I do not see her address here, but all of the residents are from the Wedge Pond neighborhood. Miss Christopher Keeler at fifty Vine. So almost everyone is actually on Vine, or at least in the Wedge Pond neighborhood. I believe that was the last one. This is just, yep, that is it. Oh, sorry, last one. Here it is, Marcia Kuhn from Four Wedge Pond. Sorry, that took so long, guys.
Brian, I'm missing one because there is a woman whose name is Vera something, who represents six-six-six. What is it? Wedgwood, the building next six-six-six.
Austin, yes.
Represents a large group of residents.
Yes, one. I concur with our neighbors at six-six-six. So this, so, oh, this is the one that's referencing the one that you're speaking of. So that is one that is missing from this PDF. I will make a note of that.
Yes, it was the board. There was a email from the board.
From Miss Vera Austin.
All right, going forward, if anyone has any comments that they would like to send as well, you can always reach us at planningboard@winchester.us. That does receive, the whole entire planning board receives that, along with the town planner, Brian Zekely. Going forward, and we will continue to read those as we get them, as we go through this hearing process. There's no cutoff date on those. For comments from town staff and other boards, I know that with us is a few town staff members and other representatives of boards and committees. We did receive some memos, but if those members of those boards or committees are here to talk about that, I'm welcome to listen, welcome to them to the table. But I also know that engineering is here as well. Trying to look through. Brian, are you aware of any boards or committees who have representatives here?
I know Mr. Serb, I, I let Mr. Serbeer in at some point this evening. He's still here. And that is all I see from other boards and committees. The staff member that is here is the town engineer.
Okay. And then we also received letters as well. So we'll let those who are here who would like to speak towards their communication and then those who are not here to speak to their communication, we will then also review the comments from those letters as well. So Beth, if you'd like to start, that would be wonderful. Beth Rudolph, who is a town. Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep. Go right ahead.
Great. Thank you. So I didn't prepare a formal letter for the board at this point. My recommendation both to the planning board and to the Conservation Commission, who is reviewing this project through a noticement tent, was to hire a peer reviewer due to the complexity of the project as it relates to the, in particular, the floodplain management on the site. Also, how the building not just provides compensatory storage, but whether it meets the FEMA requirements in terms of new construction within a floodplain, and then also to evaluate the stormwater management system for the site. The, the Conservation Commission is a little bit ahead of the planning board in their hearing schedule, so they've already had at least one hearing on the project. And we did receive a peer review proposal from VHB to look at this project. And I believe the Conservation Commission will take that up at their meeting on October thirteenth. And hopefully, they'll vote that to move forward and then we can get VHB under contract to complete that peer review. And I would ask that the planning board consider that peer review as part of your review of this project to make sure that we are able to accommodate the regulations as it pertains, particularly to the floodplain management on this site. Happy to take any questions.
Beth, can we get a copy of that proposal?
Yeah, Brian has a copy of it. I think he should share it with the board.
I might have already sent it, but if not, I'll send that again.
Beth, did you have any comments regarding traffic?
You know, I don't, I don't think that, overall, I think as the site is located on Main Street, I don't think overall the project will have a huge impact on the volume of traffic on Main Street, which is already fairly high. So I didn't really have too many comments on that particularly.
Thank you. Members of the board, did you have any questions of Beth at this time?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. John Serbeer, did you want to speak to your commission's review? And/or your letter?
Yeah, what, John Serbeer, I'm chairman of the Housing Partnership Board. What Brian entered into the record was an email request that I submitted this morning. Subsequent to that, I took a quick look at the application, but it's not in-depth and I've not looked at it in any detail. Let me just make a couple of comments. First, with thirty-six units, ten percent of these units are to be affordable serving and income level that's below eighty percent of the Boston area median income. Five percent are to serve what's referred to as a workforce housing. These are households with incomes between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent. My calculation, based on the CBD rules that were adopted, is that this corresponds to four units. is that this corresponds to four units under 80% and two units between 80 and 120% for a total of six units, rather than the five mentioned in the presentation and in the application. The second point is that these units are to be proportionally distributed within the development with respect to the number of bedrooms, the floor area size, the location within the building. Ted Tulukian commented on the location within the building, but I have not looked at either, seen data either on the number of bedrooms or the floor area size. And so that, that needs to be kind of reviewed and discussed. And then the final thing I would say is the importance of gaining approval from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development as part of the review process. The formal application isn't submitted until well into construction, or even toward the end of construction. But what we have done on, on the majority of developments is that we will review this informally with the HCD. In most cases, we've been able to easily reach agreement with them in that, in the one case, and then they honor that agreement when the local initiative program application is submitted. In the one case where that procedure was not followed is Winning Farm, and they still have not approved the Affordable Housing Plan for Winning Farm. We think they may eventually approve it, but they've had the application for a couple of months, and we've gone back and forth with them for over a year, and they have not yet formally signed on. So I would just say tie up the loose ends as part of this application review process and special permit hearing. Don't let them linger on into the construction phase. So that's all I will say tonight.
Thank you, John. Is there any other member that's here with us that is a member of a border commission who wanted to speak on behalf, or was been authorized to speak on behalf of their border commission? If you can't, you can unmute yourself.
People should be able to unmute themselves.
I don't see anyone, as I quickly scroll through the participants of names of people. And so Brian, do you want to read into record the comments from other boards that we have received to date?
Sure, so I received minutes from the Historical Commission and from the Design Review Committee. This is obviously from the DRC. Their notes say that the committee recommends favorable action with regards to this with the following conditions. So prior to the building permit issuance, the DRC requests to review the landscape plans and details, and that during the process of construction, they request to review onsite mockup of proposed building materials, colors, and finishes. This seems to be their standard stock conditions for CBD permits so far. The other-
I do want to comment on this, because I attended the meeting, and as you can see, even the way it says CBD special permit, I was there because I was concerned that they really are still needing some support, some help in how to deal with these permits. And actually, this was a very small portion of the meeting. So I just don't think that the planning board should perceive this as a very in-depth review. It was not. And even in the way the discussion went forward, this really doesn't capture all the different questions and considerations that were raised. So I'm just reporting that. I'm not wanting to in any way color it, but I do think that the board, the planning board, really could be asking for more information. They had their regular, it was a member of the board who serves as secretary. He wasn't at the meeting, so somebody else was taking minutes, and the chair was struggling with the doing both what you're doing and running the meeting, as Heather's doing. So I do think that we have a very talented group on the Design Review Committee, but they need some underpinning there so that we can gain the benefit of what they can see. And so also, they were not, they really didn't spend that much time with it. So we're not seeing the discussion here, and we're not seeing something that took much of a, you know, a meeting where there were many other aspects or items on the agenda. So I think we want to follow up with them. So that's all I'll say on that topic.
Okay, so follow-up, meaning that we should ask them for more information? Or that we should ask them, because it does seem like you said that they did not review the site plan review portion of the application?
Well, I've made that point, and so they, somehow, it just, it just didn't, I don't even want to, I mean, I'm done. I think they need some help with, they need somebody who helps them as a, probably another recording secretary. And I think having gone into the world of COVID-19 and Zoom, that they're, they really need more help even than when they were in the meeting together. So I think we need to give them some support, and maybe you and the chair of the DRC and I, or somehow, we need to pull together and explain to them more what we want in a recommendation, and also helping them set up the agenda so that, they actually spent quite, you know, some time with a presentation and discussion on Glen Road, and there was Forest Street and so on. But the project in the CBD is so important. We really want them to be able to work on looking at examining the plans, coming in before the meeting, having looked at the plans, which didn't happen. And just so that they're able to analyze. There are, I mean, these people are, they do have expertise, but it just wasn't, it wasn't working the way I think it should.
Okay, so that's the DRC. I do have the Historical Commission. Bear with me just a second. Okay, the Historical Commission met on September 28th and had a lengthy discussion about Three Edge Water. And here are the notes about 654. I'm not sure what that was. So, well. So, okay, so I'm wondering whether I really need to read this entire thing? Is that what's expected, Heather? Or would you like me to summarize?
If you go down to the bottom of it, it goes into-
Well, I mean, the, obviously, the conclusion here is that "The Winchester Historical Commission found no adverse impact on a historical or cultural resource and recommended favorable action with no conditions." This was an odd choice to say no conditions, only because we already know what those conditions are. They have been agreed upon by the Historical Commission and drafted by Mr. Clemson. Those conditions which dealt more specifically with 63 Vine Street have already been incorporated into the application package of the applicant, or just into the application package. So it's those conditions that were, that dealt with 63 Vine Street that the Historical Commission had already voted on, has already been put to the plan. So outside of the DRC and the Historical Commission, not received any other board or official border committee feedback.
So if, can I spend a couple of minutes talking about what we will be asking the DRC to do? Because I don't know that we can provide them support in terms of staffing their meeting, but if we are going to ask them to provide more information about their decision, I think we have to be clear about what exactly we're asking them to review, since presumably they presented us with what they thought was their final statement.
Well, I do want to say they did not think it was their final statement. There was that too. So they were, they're expecting to see more. And so they did start discussing landscaping, but again, that one person, Julie Reiman Schneider, is a talented, and you know, she's a, whatever the version of registered is, licensed landscape architect, and a professor of landscape architecture and so on. So there was some discussion there, as they felt there wasn't any information. So they got going on that, but they never, then one member was also asking about the, the, one, I shouldn't, it was a public meeting. Eileen Caciari, she's a registered architect. She works at CBT. Eileen was asking about the relationship of the massing on, of the, I guess I could call it the back or the far side from Main Street, the massing as it appears as you come down up against the house, but especially on the upper levels. So, but then, you know, the architect responded, and that was just let go. And they just kept, you know, and it went forward. But what I would say, so, but it wasn't documented, that there was this question that was raised, and you know, how it was, you know, maybe they were okay with it, maybe not, but it really wasn't, the group didn't get pulled together to say, "Well, what do we all think?" And then more than that, I would say there was just structuring it to work through the criteria in the both special permit and site plan review, the way the ZBA does, just to look at the criteria that relate to design and call them out, and then tell us what they think. So that would be a starting point.
I guess I'm a little concerned, because they have come out with their vote on the project. And I know that sometimes in our decisions where we have a unanimous vote, we don't provide more information to the ZBA, for instance. We simply say, "There was obviously nothing, you know, we give you a six, or five, or four zero vote, and we provide no further comments, because we think it's met all the criteria." So I am uncomfortable holding another board to a higher standard than we hold ourselves, since the ZBA certainly hasn't come back to us and said, "Well, you've given us a unanimous vote. Now explain why." And so I'm just a little uncomfortable saying, "We want the DRC to go back and fill us in on all the things that they apparently have agreed on."
I guess maybe I misunderstood. I'm not saying they should go back. I'm saying that I think that when I see how, just observe it, well, let me try a different approach too. We're usually reviewing single-family or to, whatever, duplexes for fairly small-scale projects. When you get a large-scale project like this in the CBD, I think we all look at the residents and the concern, and all the meetings that we've held believe that this just warrants more time and more analysis. And so that would be the starting point, that just to say, "These are priority projects, and we hope that you can spend, you know, devote, you know, whatever, a good amount of time for it."
Maureen, are you saying that they, they weren't really voting that they all loved the project exactly as it is? Is that the concern, that they were voting on some?
Honestly, I don't even want to speak for them. But I will say there was, it was a, it was a very small portion of a long meeting, and it seemed like, given, I know the people, let's put it that way, and that I was not there to tell them what to do, but at the same time, I think all of us would be disappointed if we, you know, if everybody here knew that this really was a fairly cursory review.
Going back to Deib's comment, I think, well, actually, the ZBA in the past has come back to us and asked us to expand on something we've said or not said. And based on some of the feedback that we have got, received to date, I would like them to actually go back and explain why they do feel it meets the criteria in more depth of, of, you know, the, because it is in stark contrast to what we received. And I just would like to hear from them why they feel that it meets the criteria of the site plan and special permit. So criteria that's in place. I think that would give us a lot more information of their perspective, and it would be very helpful for all involved. So that's what I would like to go back and ask them, if they would be, go back through and look at it from the design responsibility, and explain in more depth how they see it meeting those, those criteria.
I, I, thank you, Heather. And as a follow-up also, I do believe, not I believe, I know with, under, for minutes, under CMR, and Brian can tell me CMR, whatever, but there should be some documentation of the discussion, and there was, we're not getting that in general, so.
My apologies. I'm going to interrupt you, not because I want you to stop, but because Deib just lost his connection, and I want to make sure he comes back in, so he's here for the entire hearing. So if we can wait a minute to get him back in, if that's okay with you?
My guess is it might take-
May take a minute? I just don't want him to miss anything, because it's not appropriate for him to.
Also, just a time check.
Yep.
For everyone, and 8:30 for our zoning hearing.
Besides who, is there, have we received any other communication from any other boards or committees?
No, 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 no boards or committees.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that I did not receive something. Can you also make sure you send it out to the Disability Access Commission for their review?
Yes.
I would like to hear their feedback. And my apologies to the public while we wait. He is trying to get back in, but his connection kicked him out. I feel like we should play some music.
He says he is trying unsuccessfully. Sit tight, I guess. All right, here he comes.
Welcome back, Deib. Deib, can you hear me? Oh, there you are.
I'm calling in on my phone, and I have to figure out how to put it on.
Okay.
Okay, you're on speaker, thank you.
Thank you, Deib. So you, I think you just, did you get what I was saying? That the ZBA in the past has asked us to elaborate more on our position. And I would actually like to go back to design review and ask them to elaborate on why they feel that it meets the conditions of the, the site plan and special permit.
I, I certainly can do that. I do not want to get into the habit of second-guessing another committee's deliberations, and that's where I'm going with this, is I think they're a professional committee, and I, I don't want to say, "Hey, you've done work, but we don't think it's good enough," and that's where I'm coming from.
I agree. I, my person, I, I agree with you that that, I'm not questioning. I just would like more insight on to how they see it meeting those criteria.
Well, that's fine. I just want to be very clear. When we ask them, we should be clear about what we're asking them for. So if we're going to say, you know, if we say, "Please, you know, fill us in on what you, what you analyzed and why you thought it was good," that's great. I'd just like it to be very specific, rather than, you know, just so that we're clear on what we're asking them to do.
So.
So I.
Can we formulate a very simple poignant? Can you, you know, request of, can you please elaborate in more depth of how you came to that? I mean, it's not, it's just providing the information of what was going through their heads as they went through it, right? And to provide us that information of how they.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, yeah, I mean, if there are particular parts that we are interested in understanding there, then I think we should lay that out. I mean, we could be very general and I, I think Maureen was there, so maybe she can fill in the things that she thinks they discussed and that, you know, they could easily write up. But you know, is it, is it the massing, Maureen, you mentioned massing, things like that. If we simply say, hey, give us a better idea of what you were discussing, then I'm afraid we are not gonna get the detail we perhaps need or want.
And right now, they are in stark contrast with the communication we have. And so I would like them to explain from their design perspective, how they see that it meets the, the.
Let me also add, often even in their own meeting, that the residents and their lawyers or whatever were there and sometimes the butters come in and so on, just as they come into ours when we make recommendations to the ZBA. And it was notable, I think, that there was, that no butters for the entire Vine Street Elmwood neighborhood were there. So you do kind of feel that they were operating without the input that we are receiving from the community. And it just, it does feel as if, you know, it was in a vacuum.
Yeah, but we can't force people to go to their meeting, I mean.
No, understood, but.
It's a publicly hosted meeting.
Yep, I'll, I'll stop, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, all I will say is that it got a, it was a, it was for the purpose of our understanding what we got from them, it was a fairly short portion of their meeting, a good portion of what was the time spent on six fifty-four Main Street was with the presentation from the proponents. So their own discussion was really quite short and of that period of time, much of it was discussing the, just the lands, the site, the landscaping. So there was really very little discussed and the one person, and I named Eileen Casieri, who asked about the massing, she got a response from the architect and they just moved on. So it was fairly short and what was a long night and they had a lot of agenda items. So I do think, I think it's appropriate for us to say, we really value your input and we would like if it's not, it could be now for you to expand or discuss further. They will have another meeting at the end of this month, just to tell us more about your reaction to this project. Working with the, with the criteria, that was the other piece of it, but they really are just kind of getting the, the hang of working with the criteria in the zoning bylaw and in the regs that go with the CBD as well as site plan review.
I'm sorry to interject, but I believe it is time for us to continue this meeting to a time certain and we need to get our schedules out because we have not been able to determine the next time we can meet on this.
So.
Yep.
Um. We, I was hoping we could get, if we needed to have consultants, if we could get them started now, so it doesn't, it doesn't push us out farther time wise. And.
So I, I didn't have time to get into my recommendations this evening, but one of the recommendations was to have a design consultant hired through, an outside consultant hired through fifty-three G that would help usher the project through design and also actually do some of the things that the DR said, that DRC said that they wanted to be involved with as well. And the other consultant Beth had mentioned that we were going to be requesting, which is, but it has already been requested in terms of the flooding and stormwater, that's already going to be VHB. That proposal has been sent to the board as of this evening. The only other potential outside consultant, other than a design consultant, was going to be this potential parking or traffic study or a peer review of the traffic study. But I did not feel strongly about that and nor, nor did the town engineer. But that does not mean that you don't have that right to do. So that's certainly in your court, I think you're right Heather, that we should nail this down now and then nail the meeting down after and then move on.
Okay, so I, I would like to see a independent peer review for traffic parking. Especially, I mean, I know that Beth mentioned Main Street, I'm actually concerned about Elmwood and Vine in particular with that. And so I just, I would like to have an independent peer review of that. So I, I guess I agree with you Brian, because you didn't make a recommendation, you're kind of neutral on it, but I would like to see that and I'll see how my fellow members feel. And then.
Just, hold on, sorry, traffic or parking or?
Traffic, which also addresses the visibility and, you know, the parking spaces around it, the movement around the building is.
Well, yeah, okay, well, essentially all.
Visibility.
I'm just trying to figure out if all you're asking for is a peer review of the existing study that they did? Is that correct?
That's all we can do unless we pay for it ourselves.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking, all you're, all you want to do is to get a peer review to, peer review the, the existing traffic study that they did, is that correct?
Well, okay.
What are your thoughts?
I want to know what, what's the existing study or what, is it a traffic study or a parking study?
Traffic.
Traffic impact and access study.
Parking, and let me elaborate, the town, some years ago, before we put different hours on and we had a whole different approach to parking in the town center and everything was analyzed, you know, different streets, what capacity, how many, how many minutes, how many hours and so on. I think the time has come to figure out what's going on with the parking and that means understanding. And here we are in COVID again and with parking is a very different situation. But what is, what, I, I mean, if, if I were hiring somebody for a parking consultant or a parking analysis, I would want to know what is thrown off in the way of parking at the congregational church? What schools are located in there, I believe there's still a nursery school and I believe the Chinese school is still going there. And then we also have the synagogue and what's the parking situation there? What is a realistic expectation for ancillary, as you use the word parking, that goes with the new units that are just coming online on Elmwood, for example, and then this project? So it's a very small area, but it should be something that can be analyzed. And then what's the recommendation? So that may be delivered to the select board, but I think we're in the position now to figure it out. So that's my point about parking.
I agree about the parking because that's something we heard early on from the residents that they were concerned about in that neighborhood.
I, the only thing I can say is I know the select board and I don't know much about this, but they're trying to do a parking, a downtown parking master plan study of some kind, which is really what, what you're talking about on a smaller scale. I don't, so, so maybe this is something, I, I, I guess I don't, I don't know really where to go. It sounds like you're describing a study that is going to happen on a larger scale in, in the downtown.
Well, I don't think we necessarily can wait for that.
No, I agree, I'm, I'm just, I just don't know how appropriate it is.
Related to this project when you're adding thirty some units and I don't even know what the, what we're going to call. I mean, these people will have visitors and whether it's a personal or tradesman or whatever, there's somehow, we're adding, we're adding, we're going to need capacity for the residents and I, and what's the recommendation? There may be something that can be done.
Well, I just want to know who's gonna pay for that, because I don't know that our fifty-three G can pay for that.
Brian, do you need to discuss it with council, I don't see why it couldn't, there's a direct relationship and it's to understand the permitting.
I think it's a, I guess this is not a legal thing, I think more just personally, it's probably a, a small stretch to, to do like a full parking study of the entire area when there, a traffic study, meaning you, usually you would do a peer review of the traffic study that was performed and potentially make that scope a little larger.
Oh, I'm actually less concerned about the number of cars moving up and down because this development is residential. It's not going to throw off that many cars in terms of movement, but it's going to throw off cars in terms of parking.
The, the other thing too that's going on is on Elmwood, there's unregulated, in their parking restrictions that they provide in their traffic impact and access study, there is unreg, unregulated parking on the side of the site. That is now going to be impacted by the change of egress and various things. So I would like to have more information on what that actually should look like and what the impact of that is. And, but it is a direct relationship to the site and I would like more information. Right now, currently, if I remember correctly, Vine currently allows no parking on that, on the other side of that site. But there is unregulated parking that now the street and the sidewalk and the narrowness and the site. I'm just interested in what that actually looks like and what the impact of that is and how will you address that as a result of this project? As well. So I think, so there, there may be recommendations that are outside of that the, it has nothing to do with the app plan, has more to do with the restrictions of parking around this area. But it needs to be looked at closer. So however Brian, you think we should do that, if it's, I think we need to go to town council, if it's something we need to take in, we, we look at it and we.
I will, okay, I, yeah.
Or we go to the applicant.
Yeah, I think what makes the most sense is I will go to council to determine kind of how much of a, of a reach this is in terms of doing a parking study, a small parking study. And, but I think it would still be the same firm that we would be hiring to do the peer review for that traffics, for the traffic study.
Traffic impact, well, the traffic and access study does deal with parking in it.
I know, that's what, that's what I'm saying, is I think it would still be one consultant that, that would do the peer review for that study and we could basically work on the scope and that's where the legal comes in. But I, I think we, it makes sense to get some, to get some money in the kitty to hire these consultants.
Let me just add one more thing on the parking, when you speak to whoever you're speaking, it could be the consultant. It is relevant and it's, somebody else has told me about this, that this is going to be, these cars will be reaching the, what's their parking garage through a lift. I'm hearing that when people do that, are doing that, they often do move their cars out of the garage and move them onto the street, so they don't get held up with the lift during the day, that they often move them. So I, somebody's going to be able to, or somebody needs to tell us what to expect.
All right, we're gonna need some votes to, to start this process.
Do we need to specify an amount of money?
I, it certainly, it certainly would help, yeah, I mean, yeah.
But can't the consultant tell us how much it would cost, like a bid?
We can ask, we can ask for scope and, and, and do that. We can also ask for a certain amount of money, just for any consultants. And then that money can be added to or subtracted and there, and so we can kind of go from there. We can start, we can start it with ten thousand dollars. And that is kind of a, for a design consultant, that it, it kind of depends on how much work they're going to do, just as a frame of reference. It was about ten thousand dollars that's already been spent on Dennis Carlon for the work that has been done that we, according to council, will get reimbursed for. But, so, just as a point of reference, it was about ten thousand for design, the idea of actually just asking for a certain amount to be put in a, in an escrow fund, that will at least start the process that will allow us to hire someone very quickly.
For design, I believe it should be fifteen, because ten has already been spent. It was at our, it was not something we asked for, it was what the, what the applicant asked for. And this was during pre-application, we have, that money has already got designated.
So you're basically saying an additional five for design, right, but for a total of fifteen, I think, I think that's, that, that makes sense.
If that, Brian, too, just to be clear, there, you had mentioned in recommendations that the DAC was also asking and that is to lead it, if it does get approved, that it then goes all the way through construction administration for mockups and everything thereafter. That money that we're recommending now does not cover that, so that peer review throughout the entire construction process. So I just want to, when, I would like to see a design peer review, it is through the entire duration. Wherever the planning board, if we approve it or not, takes us through the entire process of where we are. And through the entire construction administration thereafter, if, if the board goes that route. The other item I also want in that design is I would like to make sure that we have a historical consultant as part of that design consultant's team to review the historical resource and confirm that as we go through the process is meeting the historical commission's requests or conditions or items and work through that as we go through the process.
Well, let's finish the design consultant conversation, it is, it is, is it anticipated that we will hire Dennis Carlon?
I'll add, I do believe he should be the consultant, he's very strong on urban design and new construction. I think we should figure out whether we want to pick, we certainly went shopping and looked for candidates to work with somebody. I assume it's a fairly small amount of money, but still to work under Dennis at our selection, but to be managed by Dennis, that still would be a different kitty to pay that person.
What would this person be doing?
The person, we, I think we have to understand that there are different areas of expertise, the person would, the house really is, it's going to be lifted, it needs to be secure.
Okay, so this is just for historical, okay.
The house, yes.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm getting confused because it seems we're lumping all this together and I thought, so are we talking, we, we are gonna ask parking traffic for a quote? We don't have any money attached to that right now.
I think we need a proposal for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we could, we could, we could potentially put this as business just to vote that in at our next meeting on the thirteenth, if, once we get a quote.
Yes, that sounds good, Brian.
So then why don't we leave this blank for the moment and I guess this.
And you're gonna be talking to, to legal about how fifty-three G would impact the expansion of the parking or the traffic study?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, yes.
Okay, great.
I would still need a vote.
Well, I just want to clarify, what, how do we want, I mean, I could hand, imagine different approaches. But if Dennis, Dennis should just be told, we want someone, I mean, he's going to just have to be told, I don't think it's a question, that we do want someone whose expertise in, is in historic preservation, whose primary, what work is, main line of work is in historic preservation. So I think once we do that, we can tell him, these are a couple of people we identified and they would, we want them, we want, he should manage it. It's much better if he wants to manage it or else Brian can manage it, I'm neutral on that, but I, that's, that's all. And I don't know how to handle this in terms of a motion.
Well, I think it's just a request, it's to request this amount of money for fifty-three G to hire Dennis Carlon and a.
Yeah.
Sub and a, you can just, and a sub with a historical background.
Yes.
And are we hiring them for the duration of the project, is that, or is this just initial?
Yeah, it would have to be, again, you're, we're talking about stabilizing the building, lifting it, you know, it just, it's, and then approving the windows and all that.
No, no, I'm sorry, I meant, is, we're, we're paying Dennis to review, Heather wanted to have design review throughout the process, I recall.
Yes.
And so is this fifteen thousand going to be for the entire length of, for all of the work to be done during the entire construction process? Including historical?
No, this amount is just for right now and.
Money can be added, yeah, money can be added later.
So that's, we need more money added for, through construction administration. We need more money added for through construction administration.
Okay, so we'll be spending a total of 25K?
No, so we're getting, so 10 of this was already spent. That was since it was related to this application, we're going to be able to recover the 10,000 that that we already spent. So we're going to get reimbursed for this 10 and an additional five right now. The five will be used in the meantime to start.
So can we rewrite this so that we're only asking for additional five? Because right now I'm reading this as we need.
No, that, yeah, I under, I understand that, but the 10, 10,000 we're actually asking for reimbursement. We've already, we've spent planning board money on this project and we're getting reimbursed for that from the consultant.
So can we please split this out into two separate figures, 10,000 for money already spent and 5,000 for new efforts? Sure, because if I'm gonna vote on something, I want to make sure that I understand what I'm voting for.
Well, 15 is what we're voting for.
For a total of 15,000.
Correct.
Yes, but we're splitting it up into two buckets. So now I understand where the money is going.
And the 10,000 is to reduce, is to reimburse. The town of Winchester for money already spent on design consultant.
And Brian, you need to put a K after your $10.
Oh, do I have to?
Well, we won't get our 10,000 back for, yes, for 10.
Yeah, we'll just do this, right? Okay.
I move that we request funds as noted and. And item three. Is that sufficient to go forward or do we need something more wordy?
Well, it's $15,000 for the design consultant and and by the way, I don't want to call this a sub. This is a separate, probably it'll be a separate contract. I don't think we otherwise just Dennis hires, we should be hiring. So anyway, it's a design consultant and a consultant with a background in historic preservation. So 15,000 total and then another amount will be requesting for parking and traffic study. The amount to be determined on October 13th.
Is that your motion, Maureen?
Yeah, long winded.
Do you have our, you kind of started a motion and kind of did it.
Well, if we're, if we're not going to be voting on the parking and traffic, do we actually have to put it in this motion now?
No.
No, but it was, the motion was made.
I can withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion.
All right, motion is withdrawn. Maureen, your motion stands. Do we need to discuss? With no discussion by the board, please do roll call vote.
Meister, aye.
Hannah, aye.
I didn't hear a second to Maureen's motion.
I didn't either.
My apologize, that's my fault. Is there a second to Maureen's motion?
Because.
Heather, Hannah is second. Roll call vote, please.
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes 4O. All right.
The only other, the only other thing we have to do is 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 close or continue this hearing to a time certain.
So we need to continue it onto the 13th because there is consultants discussion that we need to continue. However, on that date, correct?
Yeah, sorry, I was gonna say we're going into November, but you're right, we actually have to continue into the 13th and then we'll have our November dates then. So you're totally correct, you know, I'll stop.
However, I would like to, because we're just going to open it up to deal with consultants and then most likely close it because our 13th is incredibly packed as well. I would like to set that next date thereafter, the 13th, just so everyone who is here and listening can mark their calendars and. Have it blocked. I think that's fair to the public. So beyond the 13th, we're going into town meeting season, which is. Starting, it's starting on November 5th, correct, Brian?
Yeah, can you guys see my calendar?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, town meeting definitely will go two days. It's possible it will go a third. I don't know when that third day is going to be. These are the only two days that have been confirmed. My guess is it will go to Thursday. We've had problems on the 10th, 17th and 24th with the board, so I think we may need to meet on Mondays and that was the email was about of moving it to the 16th or the 23rd.
Go for the 16th.
Okay, so we don't have to make a, we don't have to make a vote for that because, but.
No, I'd just like.
Just so people know, yeah, so.
Heather, Hannah, all right, does that date work for you on the 16th? Versus a Tuesday? Heather, Hannah? Thank you, Heather. Sorry, I missed your first time. Do you have, does that work for you?
Yes, that works for me.
And Maureen, that works for you as well?
Yes, thanks very much.
Okay, so all four members, current city members are available on the 16th, so we. We will, if someone would like to make a motion to continue the hearing to the 13th of October, but for the general public to also mark your calendars. That we will be tentatively continuing to November 16th at. Most likely we'll take it up again first thing at 7:30 at the start of our meeting again. Unless there's something urgent that comes in, but just mark your calendars and follow the calendar. But Maureen, will you? Is everyone available on the 13th? I'm assuming that we're all available. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to continue the hearing? To the date.
Well, we do need a time even so. That's just legal.
I think we should just do it right at 7:30.
Very good. I'll make a motion.
No, sorry, sorry, we can't, we can't do that.
Oh, we have hearings there as well.
We have, yeah, the the hearing starts at seven, the hearing starts at 7:30. I I think we should just say nine, just, just, just to be safe.
Okay, so we'll continue the hearing to October 13th at 9:00 PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Meister, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Von Mary, aye. And do we have a motion to close the hearing? Well, do we close or?
Continue, continue, continue.
Continue, I already did it. So those who know, the hearing next week is for 1016 Mount Vernon Street in the downtown as well. So we have another. Application coming in for the downtown. If you're wondering what hearing we were talking about, that we need to push it back to 9:00 PM. So to everyone who's here, thank you so much and my apologies that will. That will end our portion of this evening that regards 654 Main Street. Thank you for being patient for us as we move towards our public hearing for the fall town meeting articles. We will go through that and we'll stay as long as we need to to go through this with the public. Thank you.
A quick procedural question, so. Really, the only thing that's left on the agenda is, other than this is an approval of minutes, I'm wondering if it might make sense to do that super quick right now rather than. Saving that till the end, but I'm open to anything. I just, it might be quick.
I I am fine doing that real quickly. Members of the board, are you ready to talk about the meetings or minutes or do you want to postpone it?
We just have the one meeting minute, correct?
Correct.
That was simple. We've already reviewed it once. And this was just to come back and incorporate people's changes, so.
Any changes that were not missed or additionally found thereafter?
None by me.
Maureen? Are you there, Maureen? Oh, you're muted, Maureen. Heather, Hannah?
I don't think so. I don't, I have to find it in my pile here, but I don't think so.
Oh, I thought they looked really good. I did have one word changed, but I don't think you guys even want to hear about it. So should we just keep going?
Sure.
I'm okay with a word change as long as it's generally.
I don't mind saying it's, it was quoting me on page two. I concurred with these comments noting that the Albionis changed the, and it says process, it's actually the situation. By adding a second level on housing units, it's about the building where Brewers is. It wasn't really a process that changed, it was the situation that changed. So this.
Yeah, that's correct.
That I'm doing when I read these sometimes. Anyway, they were great. Thanks to Nancy, she, I'm really did a great, good job. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes and I, but I will pass this over to Nancy with a couple of minor tweaks. The minutes of August 18th from a motion to approve the minutes, I'm not even going to call them amended. I'm just sending them over with a word change.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we need discussion? All right, let's vote. Roll call, please.
Meister, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes 4O, meeting minutes are approved.
Nancy, I'm just going to send them over in the time to Lopez, I usually do in the bin. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. By the way, Nancy is our reporting secretary. Thank you very much, Nancy, for all your time that you do on that. Let's, Brian, you want to kick it off on going through the articles that were considering to put on the warrant for town meeting?
Yep, I'm just getting it up. I just need one sec. All right. Okay, so the way we have typically. Actually, before I start, we should, we should go very quickly. Over the procedures that we use for this. So. Sorry. So. I believe. Heather, you have to. Kind of move for, move forward with this and then I will go.
I was, I was focused on the other hearing. So I'm, everyone, welcome to the public hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. As we previously did for the hearing that we just had, just so you know, we do document everyone who is here and it does go. Into the record and since everyone signed in with their name, your name will be put into the record of being present during our hearing. It just also to remind everyone as we go through this, again, you are being recorded, Wind Cam is here with us, they record this meeting. And they also broadcast us through their channel Wind Cam and the recording is also available through their website. With me, I am the chair, Heather Von Mary, but with me is also other members of the planning board. There are currently four members of the planning board at this time. There is Heather Hannan, who is the vice chair, also the secretary of record as required by our requirements of the law. There is also Maureen Meister and Deib Gerius. Also along with me who will be doing majority of the presentation will be Brian Sekely. He is. The town planner for the town of Winchester. The purpose of this hearing is to inform the public about potential changes to the Winchester zoning bylaw or the code of bylaws at the upcoming town meeting. I did not plan to read the legal notice regarding this. If you'd like copies of it, you're more than welcome. It is readily available and you can reach Brian to receive a copy of it. The town planner will be presenting on behalf of the planning board. This is presentation is. This is technically a dry run for town meeting and we typically use that this way. So the presentation will be five minutes with a possible five minute extension to if needed.
Just a quick, just a quick point that that's for each article and I do not intend to use five minutes for each article, but that, 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 that's because we're allowed five minutes at town meeting for each article.
Yeah, so it's also, so we time it and as Brian goes through the presentation, we are checking the time to make sure we're staying within that five minutes that are allowed by. Town meetings, and I am totally blanking on Mr. Haley's, Mr. Moderator's expectations of us. So we have not received, to my knowledge, any memos or letters regarding our. Regarding these potential changes. Brian, have you received any that you?
The only memo or letter that I have received is in relation also to 654. Excuse me, 654 Main Street, so it was John Stevens, but. Yes, that was the, that was the only thing that I've received and everyone has received all of that information as, as of.
All right, yeah, you are correct. We did receive communication from Mr. Stevens regarding this. And I didn't know if there's any specific to this hearing, but yes, you are correct. There, there is one letter from Mr. Stevens that re. Provides information.
We have not received any comments from any town staff or boards.
And you have submitted it to the boards and committees?
Correct.
Okay, including the ZBA?
I believe that, yes, I, I sent it to the building department who forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. Or if not, if not, I will, we certainly have a lot of time before town meeting. To to make any changes. So this is certainly not the final, our, our final product and we are taking comment up until town meeting.
Yeah, and we have not received any communication from the select board at this time either, correct?
Other than their willingness to co-sponsor the home occupation article.
And there's no representatives of the select board here for the hearing, correct? I didn't see any representing the select board at the hearing.
Do that, yes, confirmed.
Okay, all right, so you scroll down a little bit, Brian, so we can. All right. So I'm going to open. I'm going to actually, you know, I'm sorry, I skipped, you need to do your presentation, Brian.
I do, I do.
I will be tracking you time wise and I'll let you know if you are exceeding a five minutes for each article. Thank you.
Okay, welcome everyone to the planning board's zoning hearing for the fall town meeting of 2020. I'm just gonna go kind of straight into these. Generally, the way that we've done this in the past is I go through the entire presentation of all of the articles just to get, make sure we get through them all. And then we open up the questions to any specific article. Heather, I don't know if you wanted to keep with that or because there's a lot of articles, I don't know if you wanted to make sense that we, we take a break after each article and ask if there are any questions.
My plan was to do it after each article.
Okay, easy enough. All right, here we go. So first article that the planning board has in proposed is, has to do with home occupations. This is section 3.2.1 in the zoning bylaw. The objective here is simply to allow home occupations to occur in accessory structures. Currently, home occupations are not allowed in accessory structures. Like I said earlier, the select board wishes to co-sponsor this article with us. So home occupations, they're subject to a number of restrictions that are already exist in the zoning bylaw. The proposed change would just allow office space or or workspace in accessory buildings above garages, for example. So nothing in this proposed change would affect the dimensional requirements for accessory buildings. So you still can. You know, these, these are the, their requirements that exist right now that are not changing for home occupations. So. Already no other person other than members of the family can be engaged in the occupation. So it obviously has to be a family, not only just a family run business, but they actually already need to live there. So this is currently what's happening. The use of the dwelling unit. Has to clearly be incidental and subordinate and it talks about how big the accessory. And it talks about how big the accessory, I'm sorry, how, how big the home occupation space can be. What the only change we're making here is that it's not just the floor area of the dwelling unit, but it's the floor area of the dwelling unit and any accessory buildings on the site. So it still can't be more than 25% of the total square footage of, of the buildings on the site. Again, every, sorry, everything you see here, other than this bolded area here, everything is already existing. So these are already the restrictions that exist in section 321. You can't change any outside appearance of your building, you know, other than a very small sign that is not exceeding two square feet. So you can see this strike through here. This is what we're getting rid of in this article. So, so we're saying that this specifically does not allow home occupations in an accessory building. So that's, these are the two changes that are involved with this zoning change.
Brian, can you zoom out of your screen so everyone can see the bottom? They can only see to the premises of items. There you go.
Is this, and this is better? Okay.
Yeah, it was cutting off the bottom language. Thank you.
Sure, sorry about that. So again, these are already restrictions. It's, it's very restrictive to try to have a home occupation in Winchester right now. It, it almost kind of reg, you know, it almost means that you, that it actually is an office. The reason why is you can't sell anything on the premises. There's no, no traffic can be generated. No equipment can cause noise, vibration, glare, fumes, odor. So these are, it is highly regulated right now. So the only thing that we're saying is that you can do all these things now instead of just doing it, having a home occupation in your dwelling unit, that you could do it in an accessory structure or above a garage that's in an accessory structure. So that is the, the main things that we're talking about right now. So as I said, the provisions set forth here are very restrictive as I've gone through. Currently, homeowners and renters are routinely getting around this by labeling the space above garages as a workout room or a playroom. And due to the restrictive nature of home occupations and accessory structures, the planning board and the select board feel that this change in zoning will be undetectable to neighbors of home occupations. Typically, the areas that we're talking about have a computer monitor and multitask printers and then do not generate any traffic. That is all I have for this article. If anyone has any, any questions, you can either raise your hand, use the chat function and we will recognize you.
Did any members of our participants have any questions that they would like to ask or any comments? If so, will you please identify yourself? And I am not seeing anyone who is raising their hand or identifying themselves to ask to speak. So I'm going to proceed with the article that we have numbered two. It might not be article number two for town meeting, but number two for presentation. Go ahead, Brian.
All right. So this article deals with the center business district and changes to the subzones and the parcels within those subzones. So the objective here was to create a new subzone called the West Core that has dimensional requirements that reflect the core's proximity to the smaller, to smaller scale buildings to the west. The uses of the west and the north will be the same. There also, another objective that is, that is a larger one is to rectify uniformity issue within the subzone and the height maps. This is something that was brought up by legal counsel and I will explain this as we move forward. I'm sorry if these maps are a little small. The left map here is the existing subzone map. So we have the North Core, the museum district, the East Core and the Town Common. What we're planning on doing is squaring off it with the street and incorporating these three buildings with the Town Common. So the Town Common is getting slightly bigger. You can see here in the yellow that this will be the new Town Common. So these parcels here are being incorporated into the Town Common. And then these parcels here are getting taken out of the North Core and into a new green, what we're calling the West Core. So this is the, the lay of the land in terms of what's actually happening. So just to reiterate, a few parcels are going, sorry, eight parcels are going into the Town Common. And about nine parcels are going from the North Core into a new West Core. So the parcels that are involved are, like I said, these parcels, nine, one, two, three, four, five, 131 and two and 135, these are all going from the North Core into the West Core. These are the parcels located here. And then the rest of the parcels are going from the North Core into the Town Common. The only thing that's actually changing here is the, the heights of the buildings that are allowed in the West Core. So the by right height in this new core is unaltered. It's, it's the, so these green, it's 45 feet now and it's going to, the by right height will also be 45 feet. The special permit height, however, will go from 65 down to 59, which is more, which is more closely resembles the Town Common subzone. This makes a little bit more sense here. I'm going to talk very quickly about the uniformity issue. You can see here that the green is labeling the height. So anything that's green is 40 feet. But you can see that there are some green parcels that are in the Town Common and there are also green parcels in the North Core. This is an issue that legal counsel has said we need to rectify because in each subzone, it's not uniform. So we are, so what we're doing is keeping these, these green parcels, you know, into the Town Common, even though the heights were the same. So there's very little change here. The only change that's really happening is the blue parcels that are on the west, these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, these are going to basically go from a max height of 65 to a max height of 59. So that is the major change that's happening with this article. The conclusions here is that the West Core has attributes of both the North Core along Main Street, but also the Town Common because the west side abuts a residential neighborhood and should reflect the scale of those buildings. Properties that are east of Maine have far fewer residential properties and also have larger buildings. They will have identical uses, both the North and West Core for both ground and upper floors. And instead of the table designating uses for the North Core, it will be for the North and West Core. Again, no new parcels will be added to the center business district as a result of this map change. Essentially, nine parcels will have now a max special permit height instead of 65 down to 59, but the by right heights do stay the same. Are there any questions in relation to this article?
You have five seconds left, Brian. Nice job. Members of the public, if you have any questions on this article, if you could unmute yourself and let me know. All right.
I'm sorry, Heather.
Oh, hello, Mr. Stevens.
The comments that I would add at this point are simply that the proposal for 650 Main Street is an illustration of the need for a reduction in the permitted, the heights permitted with a special permit. And that's really all I have to say at this point regarding the height limits. And that's all I have to say. Oh.
Brian, could you tell us what's the height of the new bill? I think I know, but I want you to tell us the height of the building that's being proposed.
654 Main, I believe it's 52.8 something, so we'll say 53 feet.
Right, so even that building, I guess the point that we want to all make is that even that height, which is a fairly intense development, would still be permitted through special permit or still could be accommodated through, or approved through a special permit process. So I think it's probably less directed at Mr. Stevens and more to town meeting that we want to make clear that it's, this is still a pretty substantial building and is already, it's, it's what we're seeing. Am I correct?
Yes, you, I, I agree with you as well, Maureen. The other part of it too is that we analyzed the heights and the slope, well, I did and I, I'm assuming the members of my planning board did as well, that there's tremendous grade change from Maine up to the residential, the single unit housing up on, on Vine Street. And when I, when I, when we talked about this height change, looking at that slope, looking at the height of the existing buildings, looking at the historical resources that are also around there, and then looking at those heights to figure out what actually is a height that is more meets the special permit site, by site plan guidelines, which is cohesive, more cohesive with the existing historical framework that they're working in and going more taller than what the planning board is recommending to town meeting pushes it beyond that limit, in my personal opinion. So, but that's kind of where that height and how that height laid in.
I have a comment on how this was presented for Brian.
Go ahead, Heather.
Please, please.
I think I mentioned this before, but not everyone does well with plans or height numbers. And so I think if we had some photos that showed what these heights mean and what they look like in town, it will resonate with people better at town meeting and probably have fewer, result in fewer questions and confusion from people.
So just essentially saying examples of photos of 59, 45, 65, the ones we're talking about and, okay, that's great.
Think using the images of the pick, of the heights that we use as the board and also those, those buildings, so the height dimensions we used of that area that we're talking about. So people know that we're talking about what, use it in that area, right? I wouldn't go into, I would use the specific, that area of town and the heights of those units. And then the other thing is to remind that by right currently in residential area is 40 feet. So this is a commercial area, so it's going, it has five feet more, but I think using pictures of those areas, but then you also have the slope impact.
The other thing, other that this wanted to mention, other than it's a Main Street and commercial area that probably should be somewhat taller than single family houses. It's also in the floodplain that, that, that kind of forces the building to go up about two and a half to three feet anyway. And Dennis stressed that throughout the entire CBD rezoning process. I also see a hand up.
Mr. Stevens, I'll, I'll recognize you again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question by member Hannan regarding some photos to show what the effect of that 59 foot permitted height would look like are those to be found in the material provided for the revision for the building of 654 Main Street? There are a couple of shots which show the building as planned, greater in height than the top of the building at 51 Vine Street and also closing in that building, that, that single family residence of 51 Vine Street. To me, that again is an example of the reason why the special permit should not be issued and is this particular issue that Forrest has raised, why the special permit limit should in fact be lower than 59 feet. Thank you.
Jamie Dival, I see that you wanted to speak. By the way, Jamie, are you able to also provide your address? I know we've got Mr. Stevens prior. Can you provide yours as well?
Jamie, are you there?
Hi, yeah. I'm at Seven Dicks Terrace. I just have sort of a personal comment. I just think the zoning dimensions that are allowed on this plot and really throughout the town result in buildings that people then cringe, like we're all probably questioning the scale of this building, but it is by right and I think, or special permit. I also think that we take great care, we talk about in the, more in the common area like view corridors and coming down Main Street, it used to be you could see the topography, you could see the houses climbing the hill to the church steeple. It was really pleasant and this, the zoning just is obliterating that. So I guess I'm kind of echoing what John Stevens says. I think it's too tall, but I realize this is an improvement. I just needed to say that, that we lose the topography. Right now, if you look at cross sections of the site going up to the neighborhood, it's just flat because, because the buildings along Main Street are tall, the hill climbs up to smaller buildings and we lose the sense of topography that is Winchester Center of a town in a valley. So I think it's just really hard for the designers too because, you know, they're told to build, build out and optimize the site and the zoning is allowing that. And I think we need stricter, stricter numbers, lower numbers, especially down in the valley and Winchester Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Deab, I see your hand is raised.
Yep. I'm, the only, well, the biggest concern I have is whether or not the colors are appropriate for people who have color sensory problems or whatever it's called. Green and red.
I'll, I'll just interject super quick is that engineering will make these maps. These are, these are, these were done by me at the, but they, we will have more formal maps that will look better, that will be created by engineering closer to the time of town meeting.
Okay, just, just make sure that people who can't tell reds and greens apart easily can actually tell them apart. So cool, thank you.
Sometimes people do that with different hatching. That might get around that, like dots or.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's whatever, whatever technology is used, that's, that's fine.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to, I think that's everyone who had their hands raised. I am assuming that the planning board would like to have a conversation at the end. So I'm going to keep going and amongst, amongst the five of us, the four, four of us and Brian, the five. So Brian, if you want to continue on the next one?
So this is also related to the center business district and is very, very much related to the conversation we're all having in terms of where to put the density. So the objective for this one related to the center business district specifically with the planned unit developments, the objective is to allow for large miscused, sorry, large mixed use developments to occur on the east side of Main Street and not to allow such projects on the west side of Main Street due to its proximity to smaller scale residential neighborhoods. So all we were, we would be doing here is that this is the current PUD that incorporates both the west and east side of Main Street on the, in the North Core subzone. And the, the idea is that we would be deleting these, all of these, the east, no, sorry, we'd be deleting the west side of Main Street from that PUD planned unit development and that, and that planned unit development number two, which is essentially an area that is pegged for more intense development would be on the east side of the street, as you can see here. So this was in relation to what we were talking about is that we are seeing buildings at around 53 feet on the west side that take advantage of the site. And I guess there's still debate on, on the scale. Um, and I guess there's still debate on on the scale uh, and appropriateness of that building. Uh, but these are the types of buildings that we're seeing at around fifty-three and the idea is that sixty, you know, sixty and sixty-five foot buildings and very large scale structures. Um, are not really what we'd like to see on the west side of the street. I don't believe the planning board would consider this an extremely large project at thirty-six units. It's certainly large, um, there's no doubt about that. But it's not really the type of projects that we were thinking of in plan unit developments because those need. Uh, twenty thousand square feet. So the conclusions here are that the west core has attributes of the north core along Maine, but the west side abuts the residential neighborhood. And should reflect the scale of those buildings, so these is actually the same conclusions in relation to um, looking at that. Uh, west side of uh, of the north core. Um, so uh, properties on the east side uh, border fewer residential properties and then and should therefore be for larger. Scale mixed use developments. And this allows the properties west of Maine to be governed by the special permit dimensions outlined above, instead of being able to use the PUD permitting. Route to build larger than what the special permit dimensions allow for, and that's the key. Is that PUDs allow for buildings to be larger than the special permit requirements. Um, so that is all I have uh, in relation to this article.
I'm going to add to that as well, Brian, that also when you look at the lots that are on that side, they cannot actually. Um. Get to the size lot that is needed to be qualified for PUD, so it's kind of um. If you.
I'm gonna throw out a word vestigial, try that one, it's a vestige of something that didn't for something that uh, a vision that didn't happen, so. This is just our little vestigial parcels left.
Yeah, I think to be honest, you could just lead with that. And you wouldn't have to go into all the details, it's just, you can't put a putt in there anymore, so there's no point in listing a putt there.
And maybe even it's misleading for um, and that is, it's an important point, we all discussed that to just make it. Super clear to people who are contemplating development, where the PUDs can be um, can be. What can be pursued and they simply aren't going to be pursued any longer on the west side of Main Street, so they're vestigial.
And just simply saying the PD is built out is.
Yeah, at that area of town.
No longer viable, that sounds better.
You know, I like it better too, better than vestigial, but eh.
Maureen, thank you for bringing that word back into my my life, I. I haven't used it in a long time and it's a lovely word.
And to um, Steve who's joined us, um, he should understand that a PUD actually has no height restrictions. And if we go down the route of explaining the PUD, which at some point we probably would have to with this. That this is, it's really quite different from um, uh, from a special permit. It's and we're gonna have to explain it.
Yeah, so I I've already made the note is that there should be a slide of what is it, what is a PUD?
Um, yeah, and um, in the comments, there's a question to all of us uh, that I would like to put on the record. Um, that Maureen's referencing, I believe, is from Steve, I'm gonna make a um, let's now.
Lots of acres.
There, thank you, um, that is asking if putt east height will not change. So if you want to go back to the putt map. The PUD map, planned unit development map, um, and. I'm wondering if it's talking about PUD three?
Nope.
Or is he talking about PUD?
Just talking about the east side of Maine is saying is anything gonna happen to the height and the PUD two, and I I think that's actually in relation to the previous article. Here, um, and no, nothing will change on the east side of Main Street, whether it's height or PUD, those are all staying the same.
But I think for town, am I still here?
Yep.
Um, for town meeting, uh, these are not, I I guess some people will think of what's being built. Uh, on the west side is large, we're not talking about that size, we're talking about another scale of um, height. And that's uh, what goes, what's contemplated in the PUD. But we should also say the PUD, it contemplates a certain um, array of uh, of housing units. Uh, that are affordable and that exceeds the special permit height.
Thank you. Um, for members of the our participants, um, is there any questions or comments regarding this article? Um, I see a hand raised by Sally Dale, can you introduce yourself and provide your address, Sally and?
Hi, yes, this is Sally Dale and I'm a town meeting member for precinct seven and I live at one forty-seven Cambridge Street. And um, I am speaking from the perspective of a town meeting member coming in. And for those members of town meeting who are not familiar with the difference between. A core and a PUD. Um, this will be a very confusing conversation and um, the work that's been done to reduce the size of the. West core. Um, so that it is, excuse me, the north core to take out the west core. Or the proposed west core is is all relevant, is all overlapping with the discussion of the three PUD areas. The PUD two happens to be coincident with west core. And so it's just a what, a plea to the board when you're communicating with town meeting. To maybe explain the difference or the sameness of those concepts and those boundaries.
Thank you for that.
For the feedback, Sally.
You're welcome.
Did anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, Brian, do you want to go on to the next item number four?
So um, number four is um, leading up to the next one, so there's not much, not many moving parts with this article. This article is to define the term natural resource. Um, it's a new term that we would do it in chapter ten in order to effectuate a new flexible zoning provision contained within a subsequent article. Resource, uh, the definition is uh, that is proposed is forests and all uncultivated flora, land, soil and soil resources. Lakes, ponds, streams, underground and surface waters and minerals and natural deposits. So this definition incorporates the applicable parts of the definition of natural resources that's actually in mass general law. Which established the Department of Conservation Recreation, this was the definition that um, was um. Proposed to us after talks with legal counsel. Um, that is all that this article entails, it obviously doesn't explain much because it really uh, it's talking about the next article with flexible zoning. So this is just the definition of natural resource in uh, section ten of the zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Brian. Actually, it also, natural resource is embedded in the bylaws, not just with our proposal for the next. Article, so um, you may want to clarify that in your slide, so it is, it is also, we're using the term natural resource. Um. For a new flexible zoning, but it is a term that is currently in the zoning that is undefined.
Thank you.
Oh, this is now also just defining it as well.
Um, this, this is all I have at the moment for this uh, article, if anyone has any question.
If you have any questions regarding this, um, please unmute yourself and identify yourself or raise your hand, please. Not seeing anyone, I'm gonna ask you, Brian, to go to the next one, next article, please.
Um, so um. This is an extremely interesting type of zoning provision that several. Uh, several uh, comparable towns uh, use, uh, the objective of flexible zoning. Is to establish a mechanism. By which, in this case, historical and natural, uh, some do both, some do historical resources or natural resources, but we're trying to establish a mechanism. By which historical or natural resources can be preserved within an area that is to be developed in a new section four point five. So. I'm gonna give an example to start, so a conventional subdivision or a large lot. That's planned for development as a historical building or some type of an ancient tree. Uh, or a large forest within its borders. Um, flexible zoning would allow the creation of a house. Uh, on an undersized lot, for example, in order to preserve that resource, so it's a, it's a given and take. Relationship that provide, that is provided through a special permit process. Um, another example is a historic streetscape, um, may have a row of houses built close to the street. That don't conform to the current setback regulations, you'll see this a lot, yeah, in certain areas of town. With a flexible dimension of zoning, a new house or a reconstruction of a missing house can be built that's actually in alignment with the existing historic buildings. Um, if a uniform setback is deemed important, so this allows that there wouldn't need to be a variance created. Uh, in order to make that house, I'm gonna explain kind of why why variances um, are are relevant here uh, in a few slides. The first example, um, and there will be more examples uh, that will be uh, for town meeting. Uh, but um, at the moment, this is one example that we've been talking with the historical commission as well as the owner. On uh, on what to do with this existing historical resource. So right now, this is a a duplex that's on an undersized lot. Um, flexible zoning will allow, would provide a special permit process to create a new undersized lot. And essentially for exchange for rehabilitating and preserving this historical duplex instead of demolishing it. So even though the the lot is undersized, it actually is, um, if we could turn the street around and look at the other side of the street. Uh, the house would actually line line up with the other houses on the street, so this is a very good example of a way that. A special permit process can be used to create an undersized lot for a house that actually makes sense for the neighborhood. And the the, the positive here is that we are saving a resource during the process. So a variance, um, so a variance is a zoning application. In order to build a structure that is outside of what is traditionally allowed. So it's uh, it's above quote, a special permit, meaning it's it's much harder to receive. A variance than it is to receive a special permit. Special permits in in Winchester are routinely given. Um, somewhere in the, you know, ninety percent range, which is fairly normal for uh, for Massachusetts. Um, variances, on the other hand. Forget Winchester, just anywhere, variances are hardly are hardly ever given. The reason why is because the variance regulations uh, given to us by mass general law. Say that the SPGA, which in this case, for the most part is the zoning board of appeals and in the center business district, it's it's the planning board, but. But whoever the special permit granting authority is, they have to to um, give relief for a specific. Um, um, issue if someone's trying to go taller than what is allowed or uh, closer to a side setback, um, it's all about new construction. It has to be related to the soil, the shape or the topography of the lot, so it really boxes in what you can, what you can allow through a variance. Um, in the past, the town has granted variances uh, in very, very rare occurrences. To create small lots in order to save historical structures regardless of soil conditions or topography. So we aim to use the right tool in order to legally preserve natural and historical res- resources. Um, this is um, now, I mean, this is the entire section that we are proposing. Um, I don't think we would need to go through the entirety uh, of the section, but I will give some highlights. Um, I think everyone should hopefully know the purpose now is that these natural and historic resources are extremely important and we would like to try to preserve them and basically give incentives. Uh, for preservation of natural and and cultural and historical resources. So ideas that you would be able to create a new lot that has less frontage, less lot width, less lot area. Or this or the side and rear setbacks are are smaller for the purpose of preserving these resources. Um. And the rest of this um, is is kind of more perfunctory in terms of the the process by by which we would, we would go through. Um, so um, this basic, this then um, goes into who is actually going to be reviewing it, if it's um. If it's a, if it's a historical resource that's being uh, preserved, then the historical commission would be involved if there's some type of natural resource such as. Um, and it's an extremely old stand of trees or very large ancient tree. Um, then the tree warden and or the conservation agent would be involved in this. And uh, an extremely important part of the uh, of this plan is that um, or that. A restriction has been shown to be recorded, providing that the reduced frontage or otherwise. Um, has to be recorded therewith and the existing resource shall be preserved consistent with a perpetual preservation restriction, so this is, this is a real. Key aspect of this bylaw that would allow preservation to um, to continue uh, into the future. Um, that is all I have for this article.
Thank you, Brian. Um, alongside with that, um, I I just want to reiterate from my perspective. That we aren't reducing opportunities with this proposal, we're actually adding an opportunity uh, which has incentives. Uh, for property owners and part of uh, this, not only is it supporting um, natural resources or our historical resources. But it is also um, going to help build some of our building stock for more affordable housing and maintaining some of that stock. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that um, we note that um, at this time that. That it is um, that there are other benefits uh, beyond just this, it leads more towards uh, the town's goals and affordable housing. Um, on and uh, and saved a lot of the historical houses that are more, that are leading more to our affordable housing stock in town as well and supports that, so. It's an incentive, it's not a reduction in any way of opportunities, um, it's an addition. So um. With that, did anyone have any comment? Or questions for the board?
This, um, this is Cheryl, I I was wondering if someone can help me understand. Um, you're putting natural and historic, well, you're putting them together in this case and. I could understand historic and how we establish value with historic resources, how are. Natural resources, how do you establish value in those, I mean, I could see. That could be um. I mean, not an old tree, obviously, but um. Um, how how that could be interpreted in a way that would not lead to a. Positive result, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Do you have, I see your hand is raised, go ahead.
Um. I just wanted to comment on um, in the presentat- presentation. It, I didn't think it was clear that these. That the resources could be destroyed by right. And so that this was an incentive to keep them, I mean, it, there's a lot of here saying preserve, preserve. Um, but I think keying in that currently. These resources could be destroyed by right and we're trying to entice. Developers to not destroy them by providing an opportunity for development where they might not off be able to do that.
Did you want to answer also the question, do you want to take a stab at the question or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that's why you raised your hand, if not, I I will go to.
No, no, my hand was up before, oh, no, I can take a stab at the question in that. Uh, it is difficult to apply value to natural things because we don't put prices on them. And we don't associate them with with, you know, human historical events. And so we tend to devalue them much more easily than we do. Human built things, so that is a difficult question um, in terms, but certainly um. If you, if you see a tree that's a hundred years old or you see a stand of woods which which supports some sort of a. Um, a resource, uh, let's say, uh, environment for animals or for plants. That might be endangered, I don't know if we have any in Winchester. Um, that would be certainly something, but this would be where the developer, knowing that there is this relief. Would have to prove to the various boards that this was. Of val- a valuable resource so that they could get this relief. And so it would be up to the expertise of the different boards. And so it would be up to the expertise of the different boards. So for instance, the Concom could be asked to, you know, weigh in on it since they certainly have some experience there. Or we could ask for an external consultant to come in and to appraise it. So I think there are ways of trying to determine that value, but it's really up to the developer to say, hey, this is an important value, or it could be a neighbor saying this is an important value, here's why it's important. I don't know if that addresses your question at all.
Yeah, that, that was helpful. It's, it's helpful to understand the number of people involved in evaluating historic and natural in order to seek the relief, like you said. That was great. Thank you.
There are also a tremendous amount of areas, wooded areas in town, and with this, they can help preserve the edge of that boundary of the wooded areas, which would be natural resources. Heather, Hannah, I see your hands raised, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is a little, a little too late now for this idea, but we've talked kind of before about possibly changing the density, and I was wondering if that would be an add-on to this. Like, say you had, I'm thinking of the tubic houses on Grove Street, like if someone was going to preserve them, but add more units into an area where you're not allowed to have, you know, several units in one house, I'm wondering if that would accomplish a similar goal that we have for this, for this one, but in a different way.
Yeah, that's a really good point. There is a place for that here, so meaning that you're, you're talking about use now, so it's not, it's not dimensions. There's, there is a place, there is a place for that, but you're right, I, I wouldn't say it's too late, it's a different discussion.
I feel like it would go with the flexible zoning conversation in terms of preservation of houses or buildings.
Yeah, and it certainly is something that I think everyone on the board is, is interested in, in trying to promote more lower, you know, lowercase a, affordable housing as well as deed-restricted housing. But that would be one way to do this, is that if you take a large historical home, split it up into four units, is that, that's what you're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
We, um, we actually did have a discussion about this, and it was suggested, and I think the response was that we should do that via overlay zoning. Because I know, Heather, that you brought this up when we first discussed this, and I brought it up in a subsequent discussion.
But it overlay assumes that we know where it's going to happen, and by putting it in something like this with flexible zoning, it could be a one-off, it could be a house in a neighborhood we thought of.
I, I completely agree with you, Heather. My recollection of the discussion was that the vehicle to do this was through overlay rather than through this, and I didn't under, that, that discussion. Yeah, I mean, this, this is a little narrower than I thought we, we originally had discussed because I recall our discussion about including density and to make this easier to bring in other things in the future if we wanted to. So.
I think with condo prices, you know, that could be an incentive for some developers, you know.
I agree, yeah.
Instead of one, one unit.
It would, it, it would be incentive, but my, my thought is baby steps. And currently, if, with the way that this is written, is it keeps a rhythm and scale of the existing neighborhoods in place, right? So that's what they have to come into, so the similar scale setback and everything. So it's a consistent rhythm, which has a lot less impact as if you took the house on Grove and you turned it into multiple units, you're now adding more cars on the site. And in, and there's going to be a lot more things that, that need to be deal, dealt with of how many units. Because in that house, you probably could have gotten 15 units in there, right? So those are other things that we'd have to look at. I don't think at this time, we have the ability to really analyze it to see, but I do see where you're going, and I know that there is a lot of studies across the US that address with exactly what you're talking about and that it's been having really positive impacts to creating affordable, but also supporting the, our resources throughout our town that we currently have and.
Well, another thing that it does is it keeps the open space that we're losing. Right now, we're seeing lots subdivided and other large houses put on them, and we're losing trees and views. So if we could get more units and keep the building envelopes, I, I think that we would keep the character of town better.
I agree, I just don't think we can get, we can do the stuff we need to do to get us there, but I'm not, I'm out of luck for spring.
It's a little late, but maybe it could, we could try to put it in this, in this place later.
I think that makes the most sense is to see how we, let's hopefully, well, why don't we pass this one first, but then, and then we can, I think that it does make sense that we could probably incorporate it into this, into this section.
Well, and we would have time to make a better argument and have examples of other places that have done that.
Agreed.
Yeah, I have a feeling we're going to be looking at different densities for different parts of town, so we are going to have to consider impacts. For instance, let's say you want to chop up something in the flat, you can certainly accommodate more housing or more cars there, for instance, than you could in one of the precincts which have smaller lots. So I think we are going to find that we are going to need to make a decision based on where in town the people want to do this. I don't advocate chopping up houses in the flats, by the way, just. Well, while there are certain houses, I think, don't, won't, won't get chopped up well, I mean, I think there's a, there's a, um, yeah, that's a, that's, I, I'm all in favor of chopping up houses when.
I'm going to pull you out of this one, Dea.
I cannot, I cannot step backwards fast enough.
Because you're saying one thing, but you mean another thing and.
I'm.
Yeah, it's late.
I'm almost, yeah, I'm almost, I'm almost there, I really am.
It's, I just want to make sure we all set to move on.
Yes, please, let's please make sure.
There's a hand raised.
Yep.
Sally Dell.
Really, really quickly, when I, when I, when you were talking about this, I don't know, last meeting, couple meetings ago, the word flexible, to me, feels like a flag. And what's really critical about this proposed bylaw is the words natural and historic resource preservation. And I really also like the reference to the word incentive, and I know it's wordy, but perhaps a planning board wordsmith could come up with a name for this bylaw section that is not flexible zoning, because flexible sounds like free-for-all. And it speaks in its name very specifically to its purpose, which is to encourage the preservation of natural and historic resources, almost to provide an incentive to do so in exchange for the other benefits that we talked about, including affordable units. So I can't wordsmith it right now, but I just want to say that flexible feels like a flag. That's all.
I think it's a great comment. I think the idea of something like incentive zoning just does sound much better, so thank, thank you for that comment.
Thank you. I think there's no more hands raised, so, um, do we have, we have another one? Yes, we do.
We do?
We have two more, I believe, correct, Brian?
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant hands. So we have two more, and it has, just to start this off, both of these, these are articles that we previously were, we were about to go forward with for Spring Town Meeting previously this year, but then did not deem them to be critical, to, critical for the town meeting, so we have bumped them. These are what we would consider non-controversial articles. Because of that, the manager's office is wondering if the board could take a vote to potentially put number six and number seven on the consent agenda. So that is something for the board to think about and vote on possibly tonight or soon. To, I, I would, I would be in favor of pushing both of these articles, six and seven, which are the addition of the Disability Access Commission and fixing them with a, a clear error in the zoning bylaws, our next article. I would advocate for putting those on the consent agenda, and I hope we, we vote quickly tonight before we're over to put those on the consent.
I'm going to make that motion to put our, our, our articles numbered six and seven on the consent agenda for Fall Town Meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
For discussion, I just, I don't see any reason not to put it on that. There is to include more people in reviewing, especially the Disability Access Commission, to have more input on our, on the reviews for, is, is, I, I can't imagine someone would be upset with that. And then the other ones are clerical error, so I don't see any issue with that, and I don't see, if someone has a problem with the Disability Access Commission having a review authority, we, that's a different issue.
So you have a motion.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, did anyone else have any comments?
No.
Does everyone understand, Brian, did you want to, just for those who are listening, what that actually means to move it to the consent agenda, what we're voting on?
Yeah, very quickly, the consent agenda is essentially a whole bunch of smaller articles that people review. There's virtually nothing, there's not a lot prepared in the, in terms of presentations, but it allows people to review it and, and vote all of them in at once. You, you agree, the vote is to agree to the consent agenda, so it's essentially a whole bunch of articles that are in a bucket. You're reviewing all of them and then voting all of them in at once. So these two articles would be put into that consent agenda with several other articles.
And we would not be doing separate presentations on them unless asked by.
And the, the, I guess I should have said, the reason for this is because non-controversial articles, this way we don't, it would not take up time dur, during, during town meeting. So it's an order, it's a way to streamline it.
All right, I'm going to call the vote if no one else has any comments. All right, roll call vote, please.
Meister, I.
Chair, yes, I.
Hannah, I.
Von Mary, I. Motion passes for O to move our six and seven to the consent agenda for town meeting.
All right, I'll just move right in now. So our sixth article is related to the Disability Access Commission, and the idea is to, the objective is to incorporate the DAC as a review authority for site plan reviews, special permits, variances, and as well as comprehensive permit applications known as 40B. So designing the town's buildings and other physical infrastructure with the input from the DAC can make each project that much more inclusive. It's anticipated that the DAC will review petitions for multifamily structures and mixed-use or commercial structures, although they may comment on single-family homes and duplex petitions. So they have the ability to comment on all of them, however, it's not necessarily anticipated. We would be getting lots of comments for them about, you know, bump outs and, and that type of thing related to setback encroachment. This is the section that basically, and the only change in the section 9.4.3 is just adding the DAC as a review authority, and it's doing this in several different places. So one was the special permit criteria, this is the site plan review criteria, adding the Disability Access Commission as, as a review authority, and as well as in the Center Business District. So this is one article that's basically putting the DAC in site plan review, special permit, and everything that's in the Center Business District. Again, this was an article that was left over from last town meeting, and that was
Is there any questions on behalf of the participants? All right, it's pretty straightforward, so I'm going to have you go to the next one, Brian.
The next one, this is simply an incorrect reference in, in 958. So this is to fix a mistake in the zoning bylaw by replacing the word special permit with site plan review. This is the section 958, and it says the word special permit, and it should be site plan. The reference to special permit is incorrect, as all special permits are located in a different section.
Thank you. Is there any questions on this one? All right, so going back to, Brian, can you pull up the screen on our procedures for our hearings?
Yep, give me a sec.
So I am going to close. Scroll down. You have completed the public comment period, so I'm going to, I'm going to go, um, I'm going to close the public comment and move to the board discussion. It is 10:15, I know members of the board are tired, and it's been a very long day for us, and we had a meeting last night as well. Did you want to discuss any of these? Do you want to come back to them? I would like to actually, if it's okay with the board, we had not heard back from the select board yet, and they have a tendency to wait. I would like to ask the board, if they're willing to consider to wait till our next meeting, to make any motions or votes so that we can give this select board ample time to review these and provide any feedback prior to our vote, and send them a memo to that effect as well. And we can also send it to all boards and committees as well.
Works for me.
That's a great, I, proposal, thank you, Heather.
And I, Brian, can you just confirm, like, we do that on the 13th? I know we have a packed agenda, so it's, we, we may have to shift some things, but that, that will meet the deadline required by the town to put items on the warrant article?
Yeah, I believe if the printer, the printer date is the middle of next week, it's, it's very close to our, our Tuesday night meeting, and our Tuesday meeting, if you can believe it, is much more packed than this one.
So what, what are you, are you saying that we can't get it in, or are you saying that?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that I think that we don't have enough time within the meeting next week to talk about this much.
Sometimes when we're getting close to town meeting, and I know.
We can meet it during the day or.
We, well, we don't have to meet during the day because all of us work. Yeah, but I would be open to scheduling a separate that just goes through board discussion and board votes to give the select board ample time to review these and provide their feedback instead of going to the, to the floor of town meeting and having them.
All right, then Heather, you and I will talk offline, and we will have, get an email going about when we could potentially, if we have to meet, like, have a, a potential meeting that if we had to meet, we could meet then.
Is that okay with, Dea, Heather, Maureen, are you okay with that?
I don't really understand what we have to vote on.
We have to discuss the, discuss the feedback we received from residents today. There are some recommendations and comments, and then vote the actual articles to put them on, on the warrant, right?
Correct, we need to, we have not voted to put them on the warrant. This, this hearing was used to gain feedback, and, but we have not heard all of the feedback from all boards and committees yet.
Well, if we, if we can't do it next Tuesday evening, and the printers, they require it by next Wednesday.
I believe so, yep.
Then we would have to meet Tuesday morning because the select boards isn't meeting, are they meeting next Monday?
I would, I would imagine they are. I, I think the, our best option will probably be to meet an hour early, unfortunately. Meaning, instead of starting the meeting at 7:30, we would start at 6:30.
Can we?
I think, I think that's our best option.
Do we need it for all?
I don't know, probably not, but I think doing it then makes the most sense. It allows us, it allows us to get any comments from the board or if they meet or any other It allows us, it allows us to get any comments from the board, or if they meet, or any other boards if they meet. Um, and we're already meeting then anyway, if we could just maybe meet thirty or forty-five minutes before, I, I think that would be, that would be a good idea.
I would, I'd say seven o'clock, not six thirty.
Okay. I'm fine with that if everyone else is.
I will make it work, um, Heather, are you okay with that?
Um, I don't love the idea because I'm. Doesn't give me any time to have dinner. But, um.
Is it?
We have, we have a hearing starting at seven thirty, the ten to sixteen Mount Vernon.
And you're suggesting we start at seven?
And we start at seven, we'll go for thirty minutes, um, prior to that hearing.
Maybe. Do we all have to vote?
Um, three, three have to, we can't, yeah, three need to be there to place the article in town meeting warrant, it's.
Well, I'll be able to make that. So. I think we'll, we could have a quorum.
Okay.
Your question, it's not just the quorum, it's whether we actually are contemplating any changes because of the select board comments.
It's not just the select board, it's also other boards and committees, I, I don't, you're, you're right, Maureen, I don't, I, I don't. I don't, I think we're actually quite confident, uh, on a lot of what we've done here.
Yeah, I mean, and we haven't received.
And we have not received negative feedback, correct.
Yeah, and I know that there are some boards and committees who reviewed it and had no comment. As well, it's, um, but I, based on the agenda yesterday, we were part of for this like where they didn't have it on their agenda. And we have not received any feedback from them.
I think, I just think as a precautionary measure, we, we, we meet at seven o'clock, if, if, Hannah, if you can't make it, um. I don't, I don't think that's the largest deal, because you'll at least know what we're gonna be talking about, and you can give us any comments that you might have prior to that. So I think it should be fine.
And maybe they will have no comments and.
I've not been hearing anything, um. A- anything on the negative side.
Yeah, the other thing is, I don't think the select board has voted, had a formal vote yet either to, um.
They haven't.
To, they have had a formal vote?
They have not, they have not.
Okay, so they have not had a formal vote to co-sponsor the article with us?
I don't know, I don't.
So, um, we, that is a, that makes an issue for our vote right now as well. That we can't proceed, um, to co, have them co-sponsor without them. Themselves saying they want to co-sponsor, we've had a member representative say, can we do this, but we haven't had the full board vote to say that's what they would like to do.
So can we, can we reach out to the select board and make sure it's on their agenda for next Monday?
Yes.
And, and I might suggest that, um, come next Tuesday evening at seven, if there are any, um, major. Issues that have arisen. Um, and we feel, and not all of the members of the board are present, we deal with those, um. Revisions which are minor, and then we just. Move the discussion until after seven thirty, if all members aren't present. I realize that might impact the schedule, but.
No, I will honor that, yeah.
Just makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense, yep, I mean, um, we, it is, it is a very packed agenda, um, but we'll get through it.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I am in a three-day training that goes at least until six PM all next week, and so I can't imagine plowing through until ten o'clock without. You know, having a break.
No, I know you're not trying to be difficult in any way, Heather, so don't take it as that.
So Heather, I will, uh, Hannah, I will coordinate any, any comments that we receive, I will make sure we get them to you, so you can comment on them prior to that, prior to Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
And then you'll deliver that to the planning board for our use during the meeting in our packets, right?
Correct.
Sounds great. Um. All right, so do we need to continue the hearing, um, cause in our hearing procedures, it does say that, um, our vote is part of the hearing?
Yes, we do need to continue to next week.
Okay, um, so.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, and are you going to write this like order, shall I?
I can write them right now.
Um, and can you let them know that we had to continue, or continue, we didn't had to, but we chose to continue our hearing until we could get feedback from them? And, uh, the time certain would be October thirteenth at seven PM?
Correct.
Um, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen, a second, all those in favor?
Curious, I.
Um, Meister, I.
Hannah, I.
Von Mary, I. Motion passes four oh, our hearing for the warrant articles for town meeting, um, for zoning bylaws. Has been continued to October thirteenth at seven PM. Um, I believe that closes out all of our items on our agenda for this evening. Um, before, and I wanna say once again, thank you to Nancy, our recording secretary, Brian, who is our town planner, who has been. Uh, very busy the last week, um, with a lot of things going on, and also, uh, to win camps. And my fellow members of the board, so thank you very much, and. Everyone have a wonderful night.
What? We gotta, we gotta move to, to.
Yep, go ahead, make the motion.
I move, and we, uh, what do we do, abscond? Adjourn, adjourn, that's the right word.
So move, second, second.
Um. All, all those in favor, I'm getting tired. Cheers as I.
Okay. Have a great weekend.
Night off.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.